Good evening. It's October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. Washington County Planning Commission Meeting is called to order. Call of goal. Alvin Barton, that's me, I'm here. Fred Brown.
Yes.
Daniel Dunn.
Yes.
Sinita Eisenberg. Sinita Eisenberg. Nicholas Grudge.
Here.
Jim Henson. Jim Henson. Julie Jefferson will not be here. Dominic Lusari.
Yes.
Scott and Daleen.
Here.
Please bring in the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bring in the flag.
The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Time for update. Planning Director Mark Berthonger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things to get you guys caught up with. We had a committee of the whole discussion with council on Tuesday of this week on the twenty-first to review the utility, your funding commission recommended utilities element. Council made a few changes and there will be other changes. They just sort of didn't have time to get into the full review of it, but staff gave them a briefing and they made some initial changes and they will continue to talk about those. Also on the twenty-first, council scheduled an item on the discussion of the UGA proposals and they took action at committee of the whole to not to provide guidance to the city of Blaine to not expand the UGA or UGA reserve into the Birch Point area west and south of West Lane. Council also approved, accepted the Bellingham UGA proposal as proposed by the city. Just so you know, the city needs to approve their plan by December thirty-first. They have some other state preemptions that they have to meet on the housing density side, so they need to be at December thirty-first, so it was important for them to get sort of a preapproval from council on that, that they would be, who would accept their proposal. They did. Apologies. Council also accepted the Ferndale UGA proposal, which was to retain the current UGA and UGA reserves, but there would be no expansion from the twenty sixteen or the current comprehensive plan. And they also accepted and approved the Linden UGA proposal, which was to retain the current UGA with no expansion and not to add any reserves. So they took action on those four UGA proposals, providing guidance to planning commission and to the cities on sort of signaling their their preferences for the growth proposals for those four cities. So you will have discussion on when some of those on October thirtieth next week and on November sixth. Particular, November sixth would be the city county UGA proposals discussion, your deliberations and making recommendations on Columbia Valley, Bellingham, Ferndale on the sixth of November. And then on next week, on the thirtieth, we have a pretty packed agenda for you. We have some code amendments. The annual code scrub we need to get, which includes some preemptions, some amendments regarding co-living housing and ADUs that we also have to adopt by December thirty-first or the state regulations sort of automatically go into effect, so we want to get our proposals in. So and then you will also have time permitting discussion deliberation on NUCSAC, Sumas, Everson, Birch Bay, Cherry Point, UGAs, and the Linden UGA. Rural resource lands, but that might be a might be a packed meeting tonight. Yes, sir.
I was not circumventing planning commission review requirements. If the council is already voting on things that we haven't finalized, I mean, we're not even allowed to look at the Blaine even, and they're already making motions on it. Seems odd.
Yeah, it's the different, unique, different this time around. Usually they would wait until planning commission had made their final recommendations on all the proposals. I can't speak for the council, but we did let them know in particular to blame UGA had been withdrawn by the city and they were going to wait until after the November fourth election on the de-annexation proposal before figuring out how they wanted to respond and revise their proposal. And so we had talked to their staff and we had tentatively plugged in December fourth, your December fourth meeting as the deliberation and your recommendation on the Blaine UGA proposal. Well, of course, we don't know what that is yet, so. But it would give, give their staff and their city council, their planning commission some months after the election to figure out however that goes, what they want to proceed, so.
Does it put the county in any kind of questionable area to be operating outside of the normal operation? Because I know that the planning commission is kind of a statutory thing that we review things prior to the council.
You are. It doesn't, it's not a final decision that they made. They just made motions to recommend this and not recommend that. So it's more of a indication of where council is, is on those, at least on those four UGAs. They may take up additional UGA conversations going forward at their committee of the whole. We, we don't control that. And they didn't consult with us on setting that agenda, so. I, I think it's more guidance that they're just, they want to signal where they're, what they're thinking on, on these UGAs, so. And the, the planning commission can take that under consideration as do your deliberations as well, so. But process continues to move forward. They still need a recommendation from, from the commission.
So would you, this was in the committee of the whole?
Yes.
So we see discussion on planning commission recommendations on the branch of plan utilities. But I don't see the UGA description.
I think it was the very next one. It was under the title of a previous. When I was presenting, it's about the funding director making presentations on the EIS. EIS referred to.
As a discussion of proposal.
Yeah, yeah, they just, the, the clerk. All those discussions sort of happened under that original agenda bill, so she just kept that title in there, but there was no presentation from us, from staff. It was all discussion, so. So anyway.
We have another question.
Sorry.
Yes. Regarding the other jurisdictions who, which withdrew their UGA expansion proposals until next year. Does that mean that they are, they may be altering their proposals in light of citizen input? Or could it be possible that they would just come back to us the same with perhaps with less public scrutiny?
So the, that's a good question. What the, what the cities and the county agreed to withdraw was not the UGA proposed expansions, but the UGA reserve proposed expansions. And UGA reserves are not a GMA thing. It's, that's a Wacom County thing. It's, it's, it is a comp plan designation, but it's sort of indicating that here's where the city or the urban growth area would like to expand in the future, not in this ten-year, not in this current planning period. And it's, it's a comp plan designation, but it takes the underlying zone, which would be in most cases R-ten, so it stays basically rural and there's no extension of facilities or anything.
Okay, so their, their UGA expansion polls are still on the table?
Yes.
Okay.
Except for Blaine, which has been withdrawn and we're awaiting to see.
Thanks for that clarification.
When they come back. Yep. Uh, so that's that. Your schedule tonight, we've got chapter eight. Resource lands, natural resource lands. And staff will run you through that. We'll have a public hearing on that and then deliberate your deliberations. Just update on your schedule. As we promised, it's going to be a busy fall. Next Thursday, we've got the code amendments, annual code scrub and the preemptive amendments, housing amendments on ADUs in urban growth areas and co-living housing. And then deliberation on the UGA proposals. The following Thursday, November sixth, continue, you'll continue those deliberations on the UGA proposals specifically that are targeting Columbia Valley, Bellingham and Ferndale. Then the following week, November thirteenth, we'll have a public hearing on chapter ten, which is environment chapter. Then the following Thursday, November twentieth, public hearing and presentation from staff and public hearing on chapter two, the land use chapter and chapter three housing. Those are the final, final elements, chapters of the comp plan. And then the following first meeting in December is December fourth. We're targeting again the Blaine, that Blaine would be prepared to make presentation on their UGA proposal as well as we'll give you updates and presentations on all the appendices to the comp plan, which there are many. And then we're targeting the December, the following Thursday, December eleventh, as your final comp plan public hearing. We'll make recommendations. Now, that is a lot, and if we need to go into January, we can do that, but we would certainly like to get you guys as far along as we can, you know. That's all, all this, all this good stuff. So anyway, that's that. Next week, the twenty-eighth, next Tuesday, council has a special committee of the whole in the morning to continue talking about complaint amendments. We don't we don't set that agenda. They do, so I don't know what they're going to talk about. But they are proposing, as we're bringing these elements, these amendments and chapters that you guys are making recommendations on to them. They are keeping a running list of proposed amendments they would like to make. And some of those they've, they've made motions on, most they have not yet. But there's thirty-some pages to date of those. There will be more. Obviously, if more elements, we bring them more elements and you make recommendations and then we bring those to them. November fifth will be committee of the whole reviewing chapter twelve, the climate element. And so we'll keep, keep doing this when, when you've made recommendations on chapter eight, we'll bring that to them, chapter ten and so forth. So that's kind of this dual, dual, parallel lane process that we're going through. I think that's all I got.
Is there any question?
We've asked a lot early on in this process that the that any changes would identify, you'd be recommending the change, or what, a sort of like a one or two line summary of why. Has that been having?
Uh, you mean in the, in the elements?
In the different chapters, as they're being forwarded to the councils?
They have a little rationale bubble. Usually it's a comment bubble. It's either there or it's in the minutes. And we forward them all your minutes as well.
And does it identify who, where the change, whether the state change came from staff or whether it changed?
Yes. Yes. Yep. And just, just FYI, what we've agreed to with the council staff, the clerk's staff is that all of, whenever we, we bring you the final package of, of a combined comprehensive plan update proposal or your final hearing, that we will bring you whatever council has made changes or proposed edits or proposed changes, whether they've made motions on them or not. We'll just give that to you as an FYI. It's up to the commission whether you want to act on those or not.
Go ahead. I think you had the same question.
Will, is staff going to make the changes that council has made motions or legislation on so that we're going to get a packet, not the one that we passed forward, but one that's modified by council?
We, we, to keep things as simple as possible and as efficient as possible for us and staff. We weren't going to do that. We're going to bring you this package of proposed amendments and they'll be organized in the table by chapter by chapter, page by page, referencing specific policies or specific parts of the narrative and, and they'll have a page identifier and all of that, so you can identify, find where they're proposing to change. But we weren't. Again, I didn't want to get in between the planning commission's role and recommendations and the councils. It's just FYI. I think what we're thinking is from a, from a formatting standpoint, once you make your final recommendations, we would prepare that package for council and then we would make amendments, whatever amendments council has already approved. That's when we would do it. But you would get to see them before time, before that time.
Yeah, that, that's, that seems fair. I wouldn't want to get a packet that I'm, that we're just now, it looks like planning commission has approved, is recommending all the stuff that council has made changes after we saw it.
Right.
And I have to go through and read the whole thing again.
Right.
So let's say comes back from council and we don't like some of the changes they made, like they reversed changes we made or what have you. How would it behoove us to then do additional amendments when they have the final say?
Right. Right.
Wouldn't that make it a moot point? Why would we come back? Because they've made the final decision and they make the final.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're going to figure out, yeah.
Well, we could review. If we look through their changes and we see that they're reverting it, we could put an explanation, a new statement or something why we disagree with them. I don't.
Or come up with an option C or it feels wrong. Yep. You still have that option, right? You can still make an amendment, even if they've put their language in there.
But their language won't be in the package.
It'll be in that separate file.
I can make, perhaps suggest. The council will get, as the council always does, they get a massive amount of stuff to write. My second week on the job, I have nine hundred and ninety-six pages. My last paper is two and a half thousand pages. This is five, you get it five days before the meeting. So if, if there's stuff that they, they change, you say, no, 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 you're really out for lunch. There was a very strong reason why we recommended this. I, I would suggest writing back saying, I know you, I was changing this. I'd like you to reconsider. The only thing I would suggest is, is as much as we can keep that to a limited, smaller document. It's a supplement, the better, the more chance it's going to get read.
There's a lot of stuff. How do you feel about proposition one?
On the ballot.
Uh-huh.
I'll figure back.
Well, it's the one that, it's the one that would allow county council to hire legislative.
Well, actually, you know, I'm not supportive of it.
A package is standard, we're a little off topic. I'm going to, I'm going to, there's a few comments, right? This is actually where basically, I mean, I can say it, but you mentioned their comments. That's true. It's true, man.
That's true. It's true, man, to the wider planning commission role within a county government structure.
Okay, well, let's move on. First, for the record, Commissioner Eisenberg and Commissioner Hanson arrived approximately six oh two. So it's in the record. So that was
I have a timestamp.
All right, so now it's open session for public comment. Eileen, will you take over please?
Yes. Welcome to the meeting. This meeting is being broadcast live. The audio is being recorded and will be posted to the county website. As noted on your website, members of the public may watch the meeting or join online or by the phone. During the open public comment session, speakers may not speak to the items that are scheduled on the agenda for a public hearing tonight, which is chapter eight, uh, resource lands. So you can talk about anything else besides that. Uh, you will be given three minutes and we will start with those in the room first. Is anyone in the room that wish to speak at this time? Seeing none, we will move to the attendees. I see one. Reese Dorvold, would you, do you wish to speak at this time? Seeing no hands, chair.
Okay, thank you, Eileen. It's time for commissioner comments. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Brown.
Reason we didn't have, uh, the reason I don't like opposition, one, which we're all going to discuss remain in the public setting, is we hired it, which is divided, but we never used it. There was Forrest Longman, he gave up and we considered it. Where did they actually put it? Off topic, sorry.
Commissioner Van Daleen.
I would just like to hope that we could push for the staff's schedule that they got going and not push this thing into January and have that mentality that we just gotta keep on track and get it through and try to avoid this long drawn out January thing, if we at all possible.
To that, to that point, you know, we're, we're seeing a number of UGA proposals again that I feel like we grabbed. And so, but you know, unless, unless there are other motions or the discussion around all the other UGAs that I feel like we uh, you know, handled a few weeks ago, we can propose that those either not be agendized again, or that we expect that we are not going to need a lot of time to address them. And then we can, you know, fit more into that meeting to make sure that we stay within the calendar year for the conference point.
Okay, we want commissioner comments. Let's move on to approval of minutes. It will be September thirtieth and October nineteenth.
Prove.
All second.
With motion to, and a second to approve, for any discussion? Comment? Eileen, would you call the roll please?
Yes, Brown?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisenberg?
Yes.
Bright?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Moseris?
Yes.
Van Daleen?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
passes.
Okay, so um our meeting topic, it's a public hearing and work session on comprehensive plan update, chapter eight, resource lands. And if I recall correctly, is that Lucas handling this?
Yes. Yes.
Perfect. Uh, can you hear me, commission members?
Yep.
Great. Uh, good evening commissioners. I am Lucas Clark with PDS here to present chapter eight, resource lands of the comprehensive plan. Resource lands include agriculture, forestry, fisheries and mineral resource lands. Chapter eight is divided into four sections, agricultural lands, forest resource lands, marine resource lands and mineral resources. The purpose of chapter eight is to provide a clear set of guidelines that provide, preserves the agricultural base in Wacom County, prioritizes human need for food, fiber, shelter and energy, and ensures both the agricultural industry and the cultural heritage thrive in years to come. This chapter contains the goals and policies designed to identify and protect the important natural resource lands found in Wacom County as identified by RCW thirty-six seventy A. The development of these goals and policies is necessary to ensure the protection of land suitable for long-term farming, forestry and mineral extraction. In the previously provided memo, changes were proposed in the text, goals and policies in many sections to update and comply with GMA rules. Changes were also made based on the executive's guidance and council resolution twenty-two oh two dash zero three six. The chapter was reviewed and suggested changes are shown from the Ag Advisory Committee, Climate Impact Advisory Committee, Food System Committee, Forest Advisory Committee, Surface Mining Advisory Committee, Watershed Staff Team, Wacom County Staff and the Wacom Food Network. We have available representatives from the Ag Advisory Committee, Food System Committee, Surface Mining Committee, available online to field questions from commissioners, among others. After the public hearing is concluded, I can bring the chapter up on screen and we can move on to your proposals.
Do you anybody have any just clarification questions for Lucas?
Okay, I wish I have, um, is aquatic resources lands also part of this chapter?
Uh, marine resources?
Marine, yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. You have our questions from Lucas? So let's open the public hearing. Eileen, would you take over please?
Yes. As stated before, the meeting is being broadcast live and will be uploaded to the website. Uh, this will be for chapter eight, resource lands. Is there anyone in the room that wishes to speak on this topic? Seeing no hands, we will move to the attendee online. Do you wish to speak at this time? Seeing no hands, chair.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Brown?
Um, I would like to start the soul, but um Eileen could bring up things that I sent earlier.
Yes.
The background of this is which we keep. We keep talking about agricultural soils that need to be protected and we use the um NRCS list of prime soils slash prime soils of drain category.
One from this morning, this afternoon?
Yeah, thank you. And I, I have a couple problems with that is, and the number one is it's a relatively superficial look. And if you go to the NRCS website, and, and for those of you who haven't done it, it's a fascinating website. It can tell you a lot. You map out a section of land and with this example, she's going to bring up here in a minute, I've chosen as an example. The UGA reserve area proposed for Ferndale. If you bring up that area, it will then map out and will tell you which soils are defined as apiated soils, which, which is in the county list of, of soils. Or what it doesn't tell you is what is the productivity of those soils. And to do that, you need to go down two or three layers in the soil database. And the um, the soil, you have the, the primary category classification which we use, which you'll show on the map. And then the next category down, that's most usual is the soil productivity class, I believe it's called. Um, it's sort of uh capability class subclass units. So this is the area that was proposed as the UGA reserve area for um Ferndale. And of these areas, the only areas that are really suitable for agriculture are represent about eighteen percent of this total. And the reason being is because these subclasses talk about the productivity of the land based on whether it's soil chemistry and whether it has access, whether it needs to be irrigated or not irrigated. There is very little irrigation water on the west side of the freeway, which is why you see very few crops historically growing on the west side of the freeway. So why we can sit here and say, oh, we have to protect this land because it's prime ag land. It's actually not prime ag land. A because this, the, the soil, the soil capability class does not support prime ag land. And B because there's no water there. Then the third reason, which probably explains why this even happened. If you look at that carefully underneath that, you can see that most of that area is not farmland. It's actually large lot residential already. So I'm all for protecting ag land and I think that's a very important part of the overarching commentary in this part of the chapter. But what I want to do is protect the ag land that can actually grow ag products. And for that, it must meet the soil, soil capability class and it must have access to irrigation order. So I'm, I throw that out as we're thinking about this whole chapter. And this has been emailed to all of your family.
Commissioner Dunn?
Oh, yeah, I, I'd add to that. Um, and not to kind of jump around here, but um, there for the section where we're talking about classifying lands. Uh, and it's eight A three, probably to pull up the Lucas, are you able to pull up the, I mean, the code there?
Yeah, one moment. Uh, can you say that again for me? I was trying to get some motions into a document for you. You said eight A three, is that correct?
Yeah, policy eight A three. I've got it on page eight dagger one one. Yep.
Okay. How's that look?
Great. Looks good. Um, so I think it's kind of ties in with
apologies. There we go.
Yeah, with, with uh what Roger was saying about um how you designate agricultural lands and which agricultural land should be protected. Um, to me, like when I read this section, it looks like we're trying to write our own code, but the law is already set as to what, how you designate or de-designate them. Um, so RCW thirty-six seventy-eight oh five oh uh requires department, I think Department of Commerce to create guidelines. Um, so usually the, the RCWs are the law and kind of pretty broad, do this thing. And then the WACs are guidelines that are way more detailed than the actual details, how you do things. So the WAC is three, six, five, one, nine, oh, um, and a whole bunch of stuff under that. Um, and so when I look at this, it's like what you have here is, is ki- kind of what that WAC says how to do it, but it's, there's some, some differences. Um, so I mean, I think obviously we have to follow law and really that's primary thing. And then we can do some other things we want to, but we absolutely have to follow the law and then on top of that. So um, I guess for this one, just to open our conversation, um, I would uh make a motion that um with policy eight A three, um, we open up, we just add a sentence there that clarifies that, you know, even though we have all this other stuff under here, that we are, we are following the law. Um, so my reading would say, um, just the very top there. So we're, we're starts off by saying policy eight A dash three, the criteria for designating. What I would say there is the criteria for designating or de-designating lands under the agricultural land use designation shall follow the law, including RCW thirty-six dot seventy-eight oh five oh and WAC three, six, five dot one, nine, oh. This may include dot, 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 and then everything else you have.
Wish I have some.
I just wonder if that's redundant to number three, which more or less says that. That's all, that's all.
Oh, I guess we have a second to discuss.
I would, I just want to ask a question. Commissioner Dunn, um, I can't read that what's on there. Law party um is, thank you, there, that works. Um, the um, what does section three here say? We just, can you scroll a little bit, Lucas? Right there.
Yeah, good. He said, okay.
Go ahead.
If I might help, yeah, the uh, this, this follows the RCW and the WACs uh in sections one, two and three, and, and the WACs are particularly under section uh three, that those criteria. What you see in section four, and this is allowed uh in, in the RCWs, is that age, the county can add their own additional criteria to the state's criteria. And we haven't added anything new. We've just taken it, we've just taken what was uh H and I and D, D H and I that were in the original listing of under three and just put them, those are our criteria. Those are criteria that Wacom County added for our own designation. So we put those into four, into section four and just so what, what you see in one, two, three is the actual criteria from the RCW WAC. And then our additional criteria is under four. It was just, we reorganized that just kind of for clarity sake, so.
Wish I have, just, just a note of that, uh, historically agriculture priority nineteen eighty-five, I believe before eighteen eighty-five, the majority of the area was, has been cleared because you don't see old growth forest sitting on it. And there was a lot of sub-prime farmland used for growing fodder to be shipped to San Francisco. And so I would presume that unless there's other evidence that this whole area or the whole county, if there isn't a old forest on it, was in agricultural use.
Commissioner Dunn, I'd like to ask you a question. Um, we've had chance, but look at this a little bigger and we've had a couple of comments. How, yeah, you made a motion and we don't have a second yet, but how would this, your motion, fit for what would it do?
Um, I guess in the, in the WAC, um, it lays out like three main things and then some, some things. Um, there's like eleven things, I think. Um, so like to determine long-term coastal significance, um, uh, you need to have uh to consider the following non-essential criteria as applicable. A long list of things is classification of prime unique farmland soils and farmland statewide importance as mapped by the Natural Resource Conservation Service. Basically, eleven things are at that kind of level of detail. And I guess when I saw this, I didn't see like verbatim what was in the WAC that's here. And so I think that could lead to some confusion. Somebody says, oh, we're designing lands based on this versus like, well, we should be designing lands based on the, what we have to think lands based on the WAC. You can add extra things on top of that if you want to, but it's like, that's what we have to do. And that's how we have to define things. And then we can add our own things on top of that.
So, so seeing the WAC, you still wish to go over the motion. Would you like a second?
Well, sure. I mean, I'd love a second if somebody wants to, but go with a second like that, that's okay.
Okay. Yeah, so I, I just want to make sure we're talking, okay. Very good.
Um, yeah, so I think that's my, I think when I look at this, um, just this section, that was my main concern is that I feel like we're kind of using slightly different words um to define something that's already defined. So um, I think adding that sentence at the beginning, um, oh, I'll just say it again. Criteria for designating or de-designating lands under the agricultural land use designation shall follow the law, including RCW and the WAC three, six, five, one, and oh, this may include whatever. Um, this doesn't change anything that's here in this language. It just clarifies the very beginning, like we have to follow the law and the WAC. Um, and with this other stuff, but just a reminder, like that's for you.
Commissioner Moser, did you have your hand up?
Uh, I, I, I'll put it down.
I'm just saying, I'm totally in supportive of which, of which your, which your motion, uh, once it's been clarified, it goes beyond redundancy.
Are there any other questions or comments? Eileen, would you call the roll please?
Can she just read it back on this?
Please, go ahead, read it back. I've got a request for that.
To amend policy eight A three to read the criteria for designating or de-designating land under the agricultural land use designation shall follow the law in the RCW and WC. I didn't quite get the
Yeah, so they're follow law comma, including RCW three, six dot seven, zero, eight, dot zero, five, zero. And WAC three, six, five dash one, nine, zero.
And that was it, right?
Uh, yes, I think if that, if that makes like, uh, our linguistic sense when popping in there. Should.
We didn't vote, we didn't vote yet, sorry.
Commissioner Moser.
Yeah, Lucas, if you're typing that stuff out, can we see it?
Yeah, I'm I'm trying, uh. Sorry, Commissioner Dunn, where did you say it was gonna go?
Um, so policy eight A dash three currently begins and it says the criteria four. Um, and my proposal is that it says. Um, the criteria for designating or de-designating lands. Under the agricultural land use destination shall follow the law. Including RCW thirty six dot seven, zero, A dot zero, five, zero and WAC three, six, five dash one, nine, oh.
You have that okay, Lucas?
Sound good, yeah?
Yeah, could you plop that in there? Just we see what it looks like.
Our formatting is getting a little funky here. I apologize. Let's try this.
Yeah, the original language was designating or de-designating, not designated or de-designated. Should it stay designating? Um. Uh, yeah, the WAC used to word designating, de-designating, so you're right with the ing at the end.
Are, are you all complete?
Yes.
Yeah.
There any more comments? Wait, I think what you call the role play.
Yes. Dunn?
Yes.
Eisenberg?
Lipstain.
Gray?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yeah, yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Van Dalen?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Barton?
Yeah.
Tases?
Commissioner Brown.
So immediately before that, so just before three. So after two and before three. But then. On the same, so where we just were.
Tell us where you want wires to go.
So where, where we just, we're.
Up or down?
Well, to the area that we just modified.
Okay.
Right here.
Number three, okay.
No, some, some bullet for three, yeah, so go further down. Okay. So between two and three, I wanted to s- s- propose the following. We should become a new number three. The land has legal access to adequate agricultural water rights.
Mr. Brasan, so a- as I mentioned previously, we've organized, reorganized this chapter. So, so one, two, and three are reflecting actual, uh, RCW and WAC language. And section four are additional criteria that Wacom County has added. Okay. So if, I think this proposal would be probably best in four, three, or section four.
Right, can I ask a clarified question, a clarified question? Um, with your comment, uh, this would be for designate or de-designating agricultural land. Would your comment say you can only designate land as agricultural land if it has like proven rights to water?
Well, the, 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 the simple truth is.
Thirty years.
If, if it doesn't have agricultural water rights, it's really not going to serve this agricultural land. We're, we can say whatever we want. Well, we're, I'm making a motion anyway.
Yeah, we have a, we have a motion.
So let me change my motion. So that it'd be three. It'd be a new, a new tree. B. So you got it, I think to your point mark.
Section four.
Section four, section four.
Right, right, the, this new right there.
Ah, sorry, sorry.
Additional criteria, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, okay. Um. So, yeah, that'd be four, it'd be new four A.
Or D, can we just add D there?
If you want to.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Easier on the format.
I just, I, I, my, my reason is because I just think the water is such a high priority item, but. Okay, anyway, so the language would be, the land has legal access. To adequate agricultural border rights.
Adequate, right, yeah.
Adequate.
Lucas, did you get that?
I did, I'm working on it, uh.
How do you do in secretarial school?
Guarantee that he did better than I did. Oh, me too.
AKL semicolon.
So that's my motion, I need a second.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Moser.
Yeah, when they're agricultural, uh, lands like for, um, for harvesting hay that don't get irrigated. And properties that are facilitating ag. Things that aren't necessarily, you know, could be barns, could be, um, places where they're working on machinery that's in the ag zoning and that kind of stuff. That wouldn't. Could fall into that category but not need the, those agricultural water rates.
Um, we can't put a barn on a non-agricultural piece of property.
No, I mean.
I don't believe so.
Well, I guess my question is. I don't know if we're, we're precluding things that maybe are actually being used as agriculture or in agriculture designated agriculture. That aren't irrigating, right? So wouldn't need the agricultural waters, like a hay field isn't necessarily irrigated. I'm asking, I'm asking a question, yeah.
No, okay, so, eh, hayfield is an interesting category because at the moment, I mean, I own hayland at the moment. And. I've gone from people lining up to want to rent it. To asking me how much they, I will pay them to cut the grass. Right, so.
I think that happens all the time.
Um, and not, and a large driving factor is frankly, it's ability to produce a decent crop of grass without irrigation. So, it's not, it's not that I don't, I, I mean, I want to protect good ag land. But I, I don't want to ever say, oh, we can't provide housing. Because we need to protect that ag land and it's actually not ag land that. Because it's not productive.
What, what about if it's one that they're grazing, you know, they're, they might have. They agree. Area where the cattle, you know, eat this area and they've got water there, but they own, you know.
Might be on.
Fields next door that they're grazing on, but that property doesn't have that.
Uh, we have, uh, Eliza, you, uh, you raised your hand there. Uh, would you go ahead, please? And can tell who you are and why you're online.
Sure, uh, my name's Eliza Steele and I'm the vice chair on the Agriculture Advisory Committee.
You.
I also just wanted to mention that livestock watering isn't included in water adjudication. And so this putting. A definitive on agricultural water rights. I'm agreeing with, uh, Moser on this and that it's going to be really. Kind of eliminating a lot of agricultural lands that are getting used, that don't necessarily need water rights.
Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, to my point, it's, it's adequate agricultural water rights. So it, it, to the degree that it's being used for something. That is adi- has adequate rainfall, for example, for growing grass, that's fine. To the degree that it is got at least a productive enough well that you can provide water for livestock, that's fine. But, for example, I own, I own a property on the west side of the freeway. They sunk a well to two hundred and twenty feet. Couldn't get any water at all. That was like thirty years ago. So there's technically no water for livestock even on that property. And certainly no irrigation water for grass, so, so it's just, it's just, let's, let's protect.
Commissioner Hampton, go ahead.
Um. I think it's a, it's, uh, I think we should plan further in the future instead of tomorrow. And, uh, for instance, I've heard. Uh, statistics are like forty percent of the agricultural users in Wa- in Wacom County don't have water rights. But doesn't mean they're not going to have water that, that they, that they need to do, do their work. And, uh. For one thing, once water rights are established, then they can be leased or sold. So, uh, if they don't have a current water right, it doesn't preclude. That they will have legal access to water in the future.
And I'd like to, um, to comment also. So I grew up in a rural community and one of the neighbors, every year it was hay and they didn't water it. But it was hay and it filled their barn and we played in the barn until it, it filled in hay courts until the. Until the hay got down enough and then you could use the basketball court that was underneath it. But it, they didn't have all the water to do that. Um, river was down over the bank and I know they weren't taken out of the river. And just, I, I think agricultural land and water, um, don't have to be synonymous and, and. Um. So I, I don't want to restrict it. I would hate to see somebody like we've watched where. As we're doing the UTAs where Sumas is going out and they're digging into ag land. So what happens with the water when you put the houses on it? And you already let another piece that didn't have water, you let it get built on too, but it's great ag land, but now it's also got houses on it. I just. I think the water shouldn't exactly be, if that's what I mean, whether it's ag land or not. Go ahead, Commissioner Dunn.
It's sort of, uh, I think, uh, uh, conversation on the, the, um. Uh, tree to rate side of fishing, um, and it's like, do, do tribes have the right to put their net in the water? Or they have the right to put their net in the water and catch fish and, and pull the fish out? Um, I think it's sort of analogous to, to farming. You have the right to own a piece of land that has, that's called a farm or it's called ag. Or you have the right to farm that, make a money that's a viable, ongoing kind of operation. Um, so I guess, looking at that, to me, I think it's like, if we want to promote like a farming economy here, it means we have to have both land. But also that land that can produce some kind of economic, like crop that you can, others from just cows or corn or like whatever it is. Um, and so I think land that has no water rights, like definitely needs, like you could designate two hundred thousand acres of land. As ag land in the county, but we have water rates, then that's not, like, stop, not, not farm, you're as well pave it over, put her waters. Um, or likewise, if, you know, you're allowed to farm and have water, but then, um, you know, you're, you're, you can't create, can't generate like. The noise, you can't bring your stuff to market, or there's some other factors that make it so you can't like farm. That is sound like, um, how do we, so I guess maybe the question I think started from, from your conversation is. Do we call it farmland if you can't farm on it? And part of farming is you have to have the ability to have water on it. I mean, sometimes you can have water from the sky or from a river. Uh, or, or done from a well or whatever, um, but you generally have like, we're not like a desert farming area. Um, so I guess is the, I just want to get a kind of sense of the maybe issue here, um, as a theory of like. Or do we want to talk about how to like promote actual farming as a thing you could do in this chapter? Or more like, let's just say we either designated, don't designate it, and whether you can farm or not, that doesn't really matter.
Commissioner Brown.
So, so again, if we do it. To mark suggestions, it's been relocated under subsection four. And if you read subsection four, it says additional Wacom County criteria that define land. That has long-term commercial significance for agriculture. In determining this factor, consider the following non-exclusive criteria. So I would, I would say that you have to include water, access to water. As part of the definition of what is the long-term significance. Back, back, which land has long-term commercial significance for agriculture. That's all this does is it just says, you have to consider water as part of it. It's not saying if it doesn't have water, it's not farmland. It's just saying what is, what is the farmland that we're designating or deciding as long-term precautions, everything else. That's it.
Commissioner Hampton.
I still think these amendments are planning dead end. The land may not have a water right now. Someone might buy it, wanting to farm it. And they can purchase a water right and then farm it. So I think it, I think our obligation is to preserve as much. Potential farmland as possible and not try to second guess. How farmers might choose to be able to facilitate agriculture on that land.
Any other comments? Would you call the role, please?
Yes. Eisenberg?
Yes.
Gray?
What'd you say?
I heard, yes.
Gray?
Wait, Eileen, can you actually read the, I, I'm sorry, I'm trying to follow along on the screen and my eye, I'm actually on a cell phone. Could you reread it first before I take the first vote?
Yeah. Uh, to add policy eight, eight, three, section four, to add the new letter D. To read the land has legal access to adequate agricultural water rights.
Yes, the land, okay, thanks, uh, yes, I'll keep it the same.
Gray?
Come back, man.
Hanson?
No.
Moser?
No.
Van Dalen?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Dunn?
No.
Gray?
No.
And I, can I change mine, Eileen, to no as well? I'm sorry, I'm reading. I'm on a, I'm sorry, I saw green and it's, I'm where the arrow is, no, yeah, down there, yeah. Sorry, yeah, can you highlight it? Thanks.
We can pay attention, no.
Motion fails.
Go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
Okay, so. Policy eight A dash two. Uh, we have, starts off with land, paint the density credit program. Where development centers are offered to cities and new GAs of density credits are purchased by the developer. Funds from the density credit program shall supplement the conservation placement program funding. Now, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is we don't have a program. We've never had a program that works. Sorry, we can't maintain.
Well, yeah, we have a program. Uh, it hasn't, um. I think we described it as a dip in our toe in the water. When we passed it, uh, part of that was the outcome of the, uh, transfer development rights work group. Uh, that Commissioner Brown was on. And, um, the recommendation at the time was that the TDR program. For us, this wasn't, wasn't workable, there were too many challenges, um. And what we did do in the recommendation was to do a density credit, right? An incentive sort of voluntary based approach that if you wanted to buy some additional densities, pay for some additional density, you could get them. And I think it was only in the, or in Birch Bay Urban Growth Area. Right now, yeah, um, we haven't had anybody participate in the program, but, uh, it. A lot of that is sort of depending on the market, right? And markets change, right? We know that from housing affordability changes for the last, over the last eight, ten years significantly in this town. So, um, that's, that's just what that language is just, it's just saying it's, we have it, it hasn't necessarily worked. But that doesn't mean that there couldn't be market conditions in the future where could. Uh, it could work or developers would find it to be an incentive that they'd take advantage of, so.
So, so my challenge is the statement that we maintain the density credit program, we actually don't have one. And we've never had one that works. In fact, there's a landowner, I don't know who the original landowner was. But they were persuaded for some reason to give up about two hundred densities like around the lake water, Lake Wacom watershed. It was supposed to be transferable. And they've never been able to find a place they can transfer them to.
Yeah, there is a separate program in the Lake Wacom watershed. Yeah, there is a separate program in the Lake Watkin watershed, and that allows, was intended to. Be able to allow dense, transfer density out of the watershed, right? And into a couple of URMX, urban residential medium mixed use zones in the city of Bellingham. And that has been problematic over the years to, to get those transactions to happen. And that could certainly use, I think, some point too. I would say also, just on the TDR subject in general. That, uh, and I think we see it especially with. Sea level rise and flooding changing, that. TDRs are kind of being talked about again as a potential mitigation tool. Um, to get folks out of harm's way from flooding, whether it's riverine flooding or. Potential sea level rise, so. That, there, there could be traction in the future, there's kind of being, starting to be more discussion about it. So I could see us getting into that again in the next, certainly in the next decade or so.
Commissioner Henson, I know what, Commissioner Eisenberg had her hand up, but I think you're, I think you're wanting to ask. Mark a direct question, so go ahead.
I was just going to add to what Mark was saying, that there had been a proposal to use. Transfer development rights as a mechanism to providing water to, uh, potential farmers in West Ferndale. That's just want to add that on.
And Commissioner Eisenberg, you had your hand up a bit ago. You still want to just talk?
No, I, I was, sorry, no.
Okay. Commissioner Brown?
So. Like, I mean, I'm, I'm very supportive of the idea of the TDR program. But I think my, and not to put a motion on the floor, my motion is to strike the changes to this language. Because it's misleading, there is no TDR program to maintain. And the, and the focus should be. On, there's, there's no shortage of TDRs that people want to send. Or could send, whether it's out of the area for sea level rise. The problem everywhere, because I did a lot of research on this when I was on a committee, there's nowhere to send them to.
Right, right, okay. Right, right, that was the biggest challenge was. We have, we had, we had sending, what are called sending areas, where people wanted to get the density out of the floodplain or out of rural areas. And yes, to go to a receiving area, and the receiving area had to be in a UGA, right? Because you can't put more development back in rural areas, out of GMA. And the cities were basically at the time saying, we don't want your density, county, we've already got our own density to plan for. And so that was, that's kind of where that, that conversation went and it ended, you know, so. I don't, I don't disagree with. Keeping the existing language.
But, yeah.
Or im- improving it.
Yeah, I mean, I just want this, that's some truth in advertising.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Commissioner John, go ahead.
Oh, you're very emotional, I want you to go through your emotion.
My motion is to strike the changes in that section. Believe it as it is. Believe it as it was.
Uh, we did, for the record.
That is, it would say, a density credit program with development centers are offered in cities and UGA's. If density credits are purchased by developer. Funds from the density credit pay program would supplement the conservation easement program funding.
We have a motion.
That's my motion, I think so.
I'll second it with a friendly amendment, it was mesh language. Are you all right? Yes. So, uh, my, my additional language would be. Uh, I think to kind of help with the TDR program preserving ag, will we do that? So it would be, uh, conservation easements and transfer development rights programs. Shall be designed to protect both the land base and the ability to farm it. Easement terms shall permit necessary agriculture buildings, farm worker housing, and resource improvements essential for modern, sustainable farming. So as I say, we do TDR, make sure that you can still farm it.
Commissioner Mather. I think actually, they're currently working on trying to broaden what that program can do. Be, to try to get more people eligible to, to be able to participate, so I think they're looking at flooding. And other things besides just the agricultural side of it. So something to consider, I think you're, you're actually taking them backwards from where they're trying to go to make this program more viable. I don't know if Mark can speak to that.
That's true, yeah, yeah. I mean, that, that's where the conversation about TDRs is, I think, starting to shift, just, is towards. Sea level rise and, and, and flood. In particular, yeah.
Are you able to send? That paragraph over to Irene?
Well, let me answer, let's start about it first, I can read it again for you if you want, I don't know.
Well, I, I think your paragraph needs to be a separate paragraph.
Okay, should we make a separate motion?
Yeah, sure, because it's, it's. Again, all I'm trying to do is return it to the existing language, because it's misleading to say we even have a project.
Yep.
Let's hold.
So we have a motion, but we don't have a second.
I'll second, go ahead, Jim's good.
I, I think I, I already seconded it.
Oh, okay.
Got a fourth, okay.
Might win this one, right?
Yeah.
And then, um, one of, um. Sorry, I don't, is it Eliza, maybe Amber? You had your hand up for a moment.
Oh, yeah, um, I was just going to mention maybe keeping agricultural language in it, since this is the agricultural land section of the chapter.
That'll, that'll be coming.
All right, thank you. Situation done.
Um, do you want to vote on this motion or do you want to, yeah, or this motion first and I'll like my motion?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Irene, would you read the motion to?
Uh, to strike the changes to policy eight eight two, second bullet point? Was that the?
Yep.
And Commissioner Dunn, second.
Could you scroll to that part?
Lucas, can you highlight the second bullet point, please?
Oh, right there.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Any other pretty good discussion? Irene, would you call the role, please?
Yes, Gray?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Mosari?
Yes.
Van Dalen?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisenberg?
Yes.
Barton? No? Passes?
Dunn, are you ready?
Yes, um, and Irene, I sent you an email earlier, it had a bunch of different things on it.
Yes.
The one that I was looking at. Um, would just be called align conservation tools of agricultural productivity.
Let me, um, open it up.
Is that be a bullet point?
Um, it could be a bullet point, if that made you vote for it, sure.
I'm a format hoe.
Lucas, can you pull up the comments, uh, document that I sent you?
Is that the, oh, is that the correct, uh, one right there? Commissioner Dunn?
Um, conservation easements and TDRs should be designed to protect both. That looks great, yeah, yeah, so my post would be, to add this language in about TDRs. Um, because, um, uh, like Eliza said, it is a agricultural, you know, kind of chapter. Um, and I think this protects, emphasizes that when we're doing these, um, we, we still. If they are on farmland, I understand a lot of them are going to be for flooding or non-farmland, whatever, but if we are on farmland, we still want to really preserve.
Do we have a second? Second?
I'm just gonna go back to my original comment, because I know this is in the, the X section, but it, if the way this is. Written, it's going to affect. Those kind of programs anywhere. Right? Boy, I read it.
Well, I think it's, it should, that's under eight A two, I think it's, it's focused specifically on ag.
Well, I know, but conservation easements and transfer development rights programs shall be designated. Protect both the land base and the ability to farm it. So, does that not preclude it, these, if this is applying, I mean, it doesn't say, it only applies to me.
Cultural conservation easement.
Yeah.
Yeah, what if we said conservation easements on, and transfer development rights on agricultural lands?
Yep. That works, yeah.
My understanding was they were combining things to be able to make these purchases happen, so they could get funding from other groups that had interest in maybe flood control. Water quality, they could get extra funding from that to supplement what they could pay for just the development rights.
They are, but that, this wouldn't exclude those, right, because those are another, those are forestry or ecological lands. They're just a different category.
I think they were combining them on similar, on the same property, but.
So, Commissioner Dunn, what are the words that you'd be adding?
Um, conservation easements and TDR programs on agricultural land. Shall be designed. So after the word program.
After programs.
No, no. Agricultural lands.
Conservation easements.
At, after programs. Right there.
Programs, yeah, there. On agricultural land. Um, and I think.
Hey, is everybody okay with that change? Anybody disagree with that change?
I think it looks good.
It's the, on agricultural land. It's not the whole proposal, it's that we made a motion, we had a second, and then we realized it needed about three more words. I just wanted to see that everybody's okay with that.
With those changes, yeah.
Yeah. But now, the one that's highlighted, then.
Yes.
Okay, and so, go ahead, Commissioner Dunn.
Um, yeah, I think, um, that might be to, to, to stay on your question a little more, um. I think with TDRs, the goal is that you have like, you know, you've got a five acre block or twenty acre block, and you could put a bunch of house on that. Um, and somebody will pay the farmer, landowner in order to remove those rights and, or, and put them somewhere in the suburban city or UGA or whatever. So that land is still the same zoning as it is, and you still do same stuff with it, it should cancel any house slaughter anymore. Um, and so I think this would help with that in terms of saying like, yes, let's do that, and at the same time, let's make sure that. That land can be used for what you're, like, because the reason do a TDR is to preserve land as ag land, um, not have it to be built houses or. Walmart, whatever, um, so you remove the, the, the development rights from it. Um, and then this would also just emphasize like, when you do that, want to make sure it's be able to use as, as, um, as ag.
I, I understand the program, I can't speak to any more than I have, I think staff should check in with the conservation easement program people, because. Presentation I got from them, I thought that they were doing something that would be combining some of this stuff together.
We do have someone from conservation easement.
Oh, well, that will be great.
Hi, yeah, I'm the conservation easement program administrator. So all of those are somewhat true. Um, we do ag easements, forestry easements, and ecological, and we are doing easements that combine those terms. So the most recent are like ag easements that have a riparian ecological area component. Um, so I. I don't see any issues with this language, other than I should note that the easement terms for our ag easements do have farmstead areas. That allow for, um, more impervious surface, ag buildings, residential buildings, if they still have retaining, um. Development rights with them. However. A landowner can choose to not include that, so it is up to the landowner if they want to have a farmstead. And that may depend on how many development rates they have left and how many they want to sell. Uh, so just good to know that that could maybe restrict. Um, certain agricultural easements.
Mark, go ahead.
Uh, Commissioner Dunn, would you, uh, accept a friendly amendment?
Would, could we change the, the, in the last sentence there, easement terms shall permit, can we change shall to should? To allow that flexibility? Otherwise, this, this is very.
So, shall, right?
Yes.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Should, Lauren, when you look at the words here on the screen, um, do you see anything that's, that is glaring, you're like, we should change that?
I think that's helpful, that was my only worry was that, uh. If there's not a farmstead, outside of the farmstead, there is restrictions on impervious surface, so. Um, I think by saying should, follows, uh, our guidelines pretty closely.
Any more questions, discussion? Commissioner Henson, uh, Lauren, uh, if we approve this clause. Would that preclude marginal farmland being restored to forestry? Out of this program?
I, I don't think so. I don't know if this should maybe say. That, for this type of easement, because we are expanding to different easements and. Looking at different flexibilities, so I think if we have a grant and a. Landowner that wants to do that, we can.
Okay.
We can develop an easement that fits that.
Is there any more discussion? None, Irene, would you?
Who seconded?
Who had the second one?
I didn't hear that, sorry.
I better vote for it.
Okay. Hanson?
Yes.
Mosari?
No.
Van Dalen?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisenberg?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Barton?
Yeah.
Passes?
Got another one, right?
Well, I have another one, right, is that a question or a statement, because.
If you're Brown, go ahead.
Um, policy eight A sixteen, there we go. And I just want to, again, this is reinforcing the fact that. The biggest single problem in any jurisdiction, we studied a lot of jurisdictions through this process, we're doing a TDR program. Um, is you need to provide a receiving area, it's not the lack of sending areas. So I'd like to add to the end of this for that point, because remember, this is a clause to evaluate, it's not a clause to do anything, other than evaluate, right? So I'd like to add to the evaluation. This sentence up at the end. By transferable development rights to rural areas. Zoned R five, R ten, outside the UGA's. With one or more of the following rule. Non-APO soils. Access to public water. Less or lower category wetlands. Or number four, better septic soils. Lucas, you talking that or?
Yeah, uh, by transferable development rights to rural areas, areas zoned R five A, R ten I. Outside of UGA with one or more of the following.
Yep. Non-APO soils. Two, access to public water. Three, less or lower category wetlands. And four, better septic soils. Once you've got that up there, I, that's my motion, and. If I get a second, I will explain logic.
Apologies, can I have number three one more time of the four items?
Number three was less or lower category wetlands. Number four was better septic soils. And then you'll need to share your screen, because we can't say. And then you'll need to share your screen, cause we can't see. So the, the, the goals that was to go. Yeah.
Yeah, anyway, that's formatting that's on.
So while, while he's doing the formatting, I, I have a second, so we can discuss it.
I don't have a second, I don't fully understand it.
No, if I get a second.
I'll second it. We can discuss it.
So if, if you do the first part, you are effectively doing a downzone with no compensation. You're saying to people, we're gonna take your R five zoned area, you've got twenty acres that says R five. You, you've got a bank loan based on the fact that it's got four development rights, so now we're gonna take those all away and, and make you turn it into a twenty acre minimum size farm. Now, you're gonna get a lot of resistance with that, with people, cause they're gonna say, you're stripping value from it. So what I'm trying to do is to make it a voluntary thing, rather than, cause the only way you can do that is a forced downside. Right? The way to get people to do it voluntarily is to give them somewhere else to take that value and apply it. And there is lots of acreage around the zoned off R five that we don't want built on. It's preference, it'd make better farmland, but it's got the, it's got the zoning for the density. And I think the best way to do that is to transfer that, it's, and to, to an area that is planted for residential development. And that could be an area that frankly has got a public water system. For which, um, in customer, sorry, in the west side of the freeway. Um, and actually, in both the Bellingham, and then towards the east, you've got a lot of these private water districts that have water capacity, legal water capacity, they have the infrastructure in the ground. And that's where you should be putting the residential development, it's biology.
Go ahead, put some buried.
So you would be able to take, you essentially be able to take a property, take one, some of the zoning rights off of it to and you'd be able to then get a second, if it's R five or R ten, five or ten acres, you could then actually get a second unit on that property.
The, the logic would be, say, if you've got an R, let's say you've got twenty acres zoned R five. Um, it's good ag land, which really should be ag land, but you could build four houses on it. The best thing to do frankly would be to track, take, but, is to track those development rights. And to put them on, say, an area that's R ten, that's not good ag land, and you turn it into R five. Does it make sense, effectively?
How does, so on R five A then, it's now R two point five?
You have to work out the details, cause again, this is, this clause is only to evaluate, it's not to do anything, it's just to try and evaluate how to do this. But you'll never, you'll never get development rights off ag land if you don't find a way, a place to send them to.
Commissioner Van Daleen?
I can relate to that, cause there's several parcels north of Linden, not in the Linden Road area, not north of Badger Road that are huge, beautiful fields, perfectly flat, and they're R five. And I'm always petrified that those things are gonna get divided, those fields will get, you know, forty acre fields, big fields. And they've been there my whole life, and, and watch those get divided up. If, if they so decide, you know, you know, Mark, where that whole area, there's that real ag stretch, directly north of Linden.
Here's the map, right, so the green are ag lands.
Yes.
Here's Linden.
That's Badger, no, it's right, go right back to the yellow where Linden is.
Yeah.
Go north of that, so you're just directly north and to the west, to your left. Yeah.
Oh, this area.
There and all the way along there, there's a lot of areas.
But it's already designated as ag.
That is correct.
They, 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 which is a, has a density of one unit per forty acres, right?
Correct, but there's, there's a few of them though that have the five acre designation.
There's, well, there's a, well, the only ones would be that, R five.
Yeah.
Right, everything else is, there, and there's some over here, just west.
That's right, so outside the city limits, yeah, that's exactly right, and, and it'd be kind of a bummer to lose that ground.
So, here's the dilemma, right, is that, um, in, what we're looking at in rural study areas is could you do a compensatory downzone, right? What we've been looking at is not so much at the R five areas for designating to a small lot ag, but looking at the R ten areas, cause you've already got larger lots already there, right, that don't have that residential development pattern already established. So, we're looking at some criteria that would say, well, let's look at ten or twenty acre parcels that are maybe in the R ten, so that you're diminishing the potential loss of residential development rights, first of all. And, and as well as that those properties would have prime soils, you know, not, not a lot of critical areas, et cetera, et cetera, all the other good criteria for designating ag lands. Um, but, um, maybe they don't mean all of, but they mean the, the major ones and prime soils and large parcel size is the, are the two big ones, right?
Mm-hmm.
So they don't get subdivided into smaller pieces. So, much of the R five area, that's more focused over here, uh, in the wetter areas, especially east of the freeway. That Brad was talking about earlier. Those are, some of those, we've looked at some of those areas, but that's, that's, that's a more difficult area to, to do ag in, as I said.
R, R five?
Hmm?
RR? RR five, is there, RR five, is there RR five?
RR five.
Okay.
It's just rural five, rural five acres.
Gotcha.
One unit for five acres. Well, we, and then, and then it goes to one to forty at ag. So we have this big gap from a density standpoint, so the idea was, puts a, we designate them as ag lands of long-term commercial significance, and convert them from brown, from rural, to a different shade of green. But they would still count as ag lands of long-term commercial significance, I mean, this gets to that hundred thousand acre goal, right? And trying to actually increase that, knowing, and the policy right before this, right, knowing that we're gonna lose ag land in cities that want to expand in the future, and they're surrounded by them.
I agree.
So we're gonna lose that ag land, so that's, that's the mitigation policy that precedes this policy, but this is a, a different thing. So, um, so, the concern is upzoning rural areas as opposed to, uh, some kind of compensation for those folks to make that a palatable approach, right, to go into one to twenty. Um, that could be emphasizing or prioritizing such parcels for the conservation easement program, so that the, the county could buy those development rights that you might lose by going from an R ten to an ag twenty. Uh, or a TDR program could, could do that, uh, some kind of density transfer, uh, program. I think, when we say evaluate, it, it needs more work, right, we need to really, but we need to start getting more specific about this, there've been a lot of concepts that have been talked about with this, we're starting to get down to it. We think the small lot ag twenty is the best approach, now it's a matter of how to get there, right, and, and how do you, how do you make that politically acceptable?
And then Commissioner Henson.
Well, I'll, you'll pick him first, go, go ahead, I'll.
My thought just is, what, what do you feel then about this motion as to helping that situation? How do you feel about that, Mark?
I, I would like to kind of not get so specific with it. Um, but I would like to consider, I'd like a little more generalized language, it wouldn't get so specific, but, but promote evaluating other options to compensate property owners.
So the, the reason I, I, I was just specific, I heard this, I, I respect that. The reason I ever, I, I, I was, I ordered to do this is that the clause in the, in the, in the conservation easement program is the, the amount of money they now pay for a, um, a development right, sorry, the PDR program, for the development right, is, is, is roughly for an R five area, is roughly about twenty-five thousand bucks, right? It's, historically, it's been about five, six thousand dollars an acre, right? So five or six thousand dollars an acre times five acres per development right, call that twenty-five to thirty thousand. There's no way you can buy a buildable lot, twenty-five, thirty thousand, it's more like maybe a hundred fifty thousand, right? So, the market has pushed the, the value of that development right so far beyond the PDR's capacity to pay. And the PDR money all comes from taxing people even more, so raising the cost of living for everybody. If you do a program like this, you don't need any public funding. And you, and you don't need to go through the years and years of tax to do a PDR transaction. You enable the private sector to fund this themselves without any burden, uh, tax plans. The other reason I like it is, one of the reasons agriculture is struggling with this community is because when a new, a young farmer wants to get in, if they buy land that's zoned R five, it could be great ag land, but if it's zoned R five, price is through the ceiling. And, and they're paying a price for value that they're not getting to use, so if you strip off the development rights by transferring some of them somewhere else, you actually lower the cost of that land for the next farmer to buy it, the next generation of farmers to buy it, and do act, right, so, right. Um, but you gotta get a return on investment based on the value of land, so.
Yeah.
That, that's why I'm so specific, it's cause I've looked at this problem for years, and I can't see any other way out of it.
Well, I think, I think prioritizing, um, or compensating property owners for potential downzone in this case. Um, I think we just need to look at all the options that are on the table. That's, that's an option, but I don't want it, I don't want the policy to limit it to only that, right? Because I don't know if that's gonna even work, or, that could be appealed and say, all you're doing is increasing densities, rural densities somewhere else, right? And that's problematic, right, always problematic. You're not correct in this.
But, Commissioner Henson.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm spinning the way Mark is, that I don't see why we should limit our flexibility by specifying one mechanism only. It's, I would support a, but, potential mechanisms could include that, you know, I don't have a problem with that, but I don't wanna, uh, limit this clause to just one mechanism. Even if my, no matter how first, good it might be.
Good shot, Dunn.
Um, I have some alternate language that might, that might work, if, if we're not super committed with this. It's more about, um, the county could review and evaluate that kind of language, rather than kind of some specifics here. Um, I don't know if we want to just go to this one, and put that language up there, or put that one up as a friendly end, or?
Doesn't it say evaluate at the beginning of the paragraph?
It, it does, the length I have is slightly different.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Commissioner Brown.
And may, maybe Mark's address is yours, if we, um, we change the word by, which is my first word of my change, to including potential. Cause I agree, it's not the, it may not be the only way to solve the problem, but it's certainly one I want us to be looking at. That'd be transferring now, that's your transferable would be.
Transfer of, or. Yeah. Wouldn't be capitalized.
Yeah, yeah.
Lucas, I'm gonna give you some words, just, just to sort of give it on the table, um. Um, the, the evaluation.
The evaluation?
Yeah, the evaluation should.
Right.
Include. Include.
Where would you like it?
Right, right there, right where you are, right where the cursor is, new clause, right, yeah, okay. Consideration of. Then take out the including. Including.
Transferring should be transferred probably.
Uh, transfer all. Yeah, transfer of.
Maybe evaluation should include the consideration, or consideration of the potential.
I was gonna, I'm gonna go ahead, um, yeah. Should include consideration of potential transfer of development rights. Or. And or, and slash or, consideration of other measures to mitigate.
Just need more flat land, that's all there is.
So, I'm, I'm not saying we're wrong, but I'm getting, we're really changing this motion from what it was.
Yeah.
And I'm getting, uh, I mean, the, some of the language I see is, is not in it, but I'm getting a little concerned that we're we have a motion and it changed very much.
Will you take the friendly amendment on the screen, so far?
Well, I think your, I think your first part was fine, but it's the and or, after the and or, I think, if you want, if there's gonna be anything else, it should be separate. So, so I had to highlight and slash or. Down to mitigate, take all that out. Yeah. So I think that's more consistent with what my original motion was, Clark, it's, I'm not saying that, yep, yep, right is bad, but if they're gonna be somewhere, they should be probably somewhere else.
So, so we had a motion, and we adjusted it, and we could have a vote to see if we want to accept this verbiage to vote on it, if you see. You know, what would you like to do, we can do that, or you can affirm, are we okay voting on this? That's one I wanna know. And, uh.
So make it the motion, I'm okay voting on it.
Okay, and Commissioner, Commissioner Eisenberg, do you have an opinion on that?
Uh, thank you for asking, no opinion, I'm just, you know, in my, I mean, I'm gonna pause for a second and say, in my mind, modern agriculture is changing, and a lot of people in the industry that are learning about biophilic design, just different ways of not industrial farming, what ag has always looked like. So for me, I'm just trying to like, learn this, like, how this would affect maybe seven generations from now, and how maybe just one, like, how we're doing it really like, small lens and very micro level, I'm just really having a hard time how I'm gonna vote on this, knowing that things are going to change a lot, uh, with climate impacts.
Yeah, and, what, I, I probably didn't clarify, what I really was asking is we had a motion from Commissioner Brown, and we got it modified on the screen, and I'm asking if that modification is okay to you not to feel, oh, yes or no on it, this is that modification.
Yeah, the modification.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Any other, uh, Commissioner Dunn?
And so this would just say, hey, county, evaluate the thing, maybe think about this.
Yeah, can I give an example, cause maybe that will help if I explain where I'm coming from, it's like, for me, it's hard to think of just one dwelling unit, like, we're talking about one dwelling unit on twenty acres, and that, yet we're talking about rural farm workers um, and people that need to be closer to where they live and where they work, and so I'm just really trying to wrap my head around how to do this in equitable manner that aligns this policy with the trends and changes I'm seeing as someone who does do food production on a very small scale and works in alongside both education lens, nonprofit, and ag. So I'm, again, I'm just having a hard time digesting this piece, knowing that I don't know how to vote on something like this when we're um, again, with climate impacts, um, it's gonna look a lot different in five, ten, fifteen years than now, and I'm trying to just, again, look at the long game, not just the short end of, of what we're trying to do today.
Okay, well, thank you, and I'm gonna ask Lucas to weigh in here for a second, Lucas. Um, I'm pretty sure I read something in there about accommodating worker housing, and the line four. Um, could you just give us a brief clarification on that, and see if you can.
I can, it'll, um, take me a moment to find it.
And Commissioner Eisenberg, I believe that there is a, a, a different paragraph in there that will explain what your question for, and to the question.
Yeah, and so this, again, I just don't understand how one would, I mean. Yeah, and so this, again, I just don't understand how one would, I mean, if that's alongside where they, like, I'm just, again, trying to think about what. Sponge cities look like, what innovative cities that are doing more like food close to where they live. I'm also looking at different models in Europe and Africa, Singapore, Vienna, Brussels that, um. Are tackling some of these issues, not just in the policy, but like showing what's possible. And then that amendment, when you're saying one dwelling unit on twenty acres. It just doesn't make sense, especially if we're trying to meet some of these, you know, goals from. Uh, reducing carbon and drying down in the atmosphere and in the built environment and in the land and soils. So I'm, again, just. It's hard for me to unwrap my head around that, that motion that's made of one dwelling unit when we're saying support. The development of safe, affordable, on farm and near farm housing. How is one dwelling unit per twenty acres? Is it a big unit? Is it a, a large house that's communal and co housed? Is it one tiny, like, that's what I'm trying to like. Conceptualizing this issue.
Commissioner Eisenberg, I, I'll read the, um, area that, that, um, Lucas highlighted in its, um. Policy eight A twelve, support the development of safe, affordable, on farm and near farm housing for farm workers and their families. And improve access to transportation and healthcare for both farmers and farm workers in rural areas. And that one is up farther, uh, up in the chapter. And I am reading that today because I wanted to, um, to address your question. And that's, so that's included in what we're working on tonight.
Yeah, but in the, in that motion, it just said what, it said the, um, one dwelling unit slash twenty. So I'm just curious to know how that policy of supporting the development of safe, what you just read on. Farm and near farm housing, which if a farm is categorized as, you know, ten, twenty plus acres. How then, then the policy in that motion that we're making and adding more and more to says one dwelling unit. Per twenty acres, those two don't, those seem kind of exclusively mutually exclusive and cannot coexist.
And just one minute, Commissioner Masary, um, Director Personias.
Yeah, Commissioner, um, this one to twenty is, is a, uh, G M A. Related requirement, right? To have, you have to have very low densities on ag lands, uh, and, and forest lands. Um, and so that's what this is getting at. Farm worker housing is a distinct and different, um. Um, type of housing that is allowed on agricultural lands, but it's not subject to the density standards in the zoning code. There are, there's a whole separate process for getting farm worker housing approved and it has to involve the Department of Health. Uh, the State Department of Health has to approve those, uh, we get involved in making sure that. Where farm worker housing is allowed, uh, by the state, it's not on critical areas and that there's adequate. Um, wastewater treatment and onsite septic system and soils and those kinds of things, but. This density designation in the zoning code doesn't apply to farm worker housing. So I just want to make that clear.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, Mark covered.
Any additional? Commissioner Dan.
Oh, yes, just, just to kind of clarify on this one. So we're asking the county to evaluate, um, to do some research, to study. But not necessarily asking to do anything specific, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah.
I mean, because part of this may require, may even require a change at the state, at the state level. I don't know because, but I, I do know this, if you want to, if you do a forced downside, you're going to have a big fight. There's people going to say, where's my compensation? And if you do public funding to pay for it, you're either going to significantly increase the price. In either case, you're going to have to do it through raising taxes. So this becomes a self-funding mechanism.
Uh, just a moment, Commissioner Hanson. Eliza, uh, or Steel, did you have a, uh, a comment for?
Uh, yeah, I did. I was actually about the farm worker housing. I was just curious, what level of permitting process is that? Is it a conditional use or administrative use? If you happen to know it off the top of your head, Mark Personias.
I, Eliza, I don't, but I know, I know that the, the state gets involved and they can actually preempt us. On citing those, they work with the farmer and, and work out those agreements, but we are consulted, I know, on critical areas and on onsite septic for sure.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, was it Commissioner Van Dale or Commissioner Ham?
Oh, me Jim. Well, I, I, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Brown that it could be politically perilous. To, uh, change the zoning to make the property supposedly less, less, less valuable. But I've never seen, never seen when they, when we upsoated to make it more valuable. A landowner ever kicking any money back to the, uh, jurisdictions. So I, I, I guess. My attitude about, uh, downsizing and upzoning is we need to do what's best for the future. And let the county council worry about the political side.
Commissioner Eisenberg.
And in that same vein, um, what Jim's, or Commissioner Hanson said, um, I'm just curious if, oh, am I muted? No, okay. I'm curious to know if we can add statements for the evaluation such as, um, rainwater collection systems and onsite gray water. Um, I'm just, again, thinking long-term where we might look at something that could be doable, plausible or dreamable and let the county council and other staff members nail up the policy. Um, again, um, coming from a different lens of what I think the future might look like. I don't want to be too restrictive. Um, I'd rather explore if it's a, a policy that we're going to evaluate to maybe implement an actionable item. Later, um, if that makes sense. I would like to just ask the commissioners if they would consider this motion to be tabled. If that's allowed to ask.
It is allowed, I think we have to vote to table it.
You can just make a motion to table.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to table policy eight sixteen for further discussion at the next meeting.
Do we have a second? You need a second? We're not getting a second for that.
I just responded why I'm not seconding. Go ahead. The reason I'm not seconding is I believe that those matters are, are handled in the health, health code. And in other parts of our, uh, regulations other than in this policy. And I'm certainly in support of the, uh, values that, that you have in that regard. And the visions that you have, but I don't think this is the appropriate place to, uh, address it.
Sounds good. Thank you, Commissioner Hanson.
I, and I would like to share a conversation with one of the farmers over on the east side of the county and. And it was this question about valuation and, and he said, we need the valuation on that property. He says that you have a, you need a new tractor and it's four hundred thousand. Do you put your property up? Well, I was watching, it was six hundred thousand a couple nights ago. But your property becomes your collateral so that you can buy that piece of equipment. And if you, that's why he opposes selling the development rights. Because the property guy goes down, the first farmer wins all the money and the farmers that come along later on. Don't have the ability to replace their equipment.
Uh, and to that point, Kevin, I'm in spaces like in Minnesota where it's a really big ag area where they're doing cooperatives, grants. I mean, again, this is just me thinking seven generations down the line. Ag today is going to look different than ag in ten or fifteen years. And so. I, why I wanted to motion to table this is because there's a lot of climate commitment act dollars, Department of Commerce money, uh, cooperatives forming. So again, I wanted to table this to get further research and ask questions at different departments around our state, including Department of Ecology. That has funding for sources, funding sources for equipment. Um, so that was, that was my why. And to try something new, I've never, never tabled before and I wanted to try.
Thank you, Commissioner Masary.
I just think this whole conversation example of why we shouldn't add any more to this because we've just made. We've shown that there is a million different things that are needing to be evaluated. That's why. Leaving it simple, what's there, I'm fine with, I would be fine with less. The whole idea is just to evaluate this. I don't think we need to do the evaluation right now.
We should have done.
Um, yeah, I, uh, I agree. I think it, it is obviously, it's a lot to talk about. Um, and I think with this one. The language is sort of asking the part to evaluate. And so I think I'm comfortable with that. Um, I think I, I have. Language like the motion after this, um, that's also about evaluating, um, I think it may be a little simpler kind of way.
Were any further discussion? I mean, you want to call the role, please?
Yes, Moserri?
Yes.
Ben Daleen?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Eisenberg? Abstain. Right?
Yes.
Hanson?
Abstain.
Barton?
Abstain.
Passes?
Eliza, you had your hand up there.
Yeah, I just wanted to share from the Agriculture Advisory Committee standpoint that I really appreciate the in-depth conversation that's just happened here. We have been discussing around this same topic at length and it's really complex and. Complicated and there's a lot going on right now with the comp plan. So we are kind of on the same page of, um. Putting a lot of verbiage in that really shows that there needs to be, uh, extreme evaluation that needs to happen. But we're also not at a stance to give exactly input on it, but would really value working with planning commission members. And county council on this because it is such a complex issue. That's all.
Um, okay, uh, uh, a motion is sort of along the same, same lines there, um. I think that you send my email to Lucas or you have.
Yes.
Okay. Lucas, did you hear my email? This bunch of different like policies, questions are.
Yes, and I inputted them into this document that Eileen and I have been tracking. Uh, you could just highlight which one it was. Your motions should start right about here.
Okay, yeah, um, let's see. So it would be, uh, seven B six.
Here we go. And I changed them all to eight B because that's the chapter, apologies.
Okay, that's right. Um, this one is, uh, it's. The review to evaluate minimum lot size, accessory use definitions, initially use procedures. That one, sure, yeah, there we go, this one here. Yeah, so, um. So for this one, I think it's kind of appropriate because we're talking about reviews. Um, so this is kind of like Rutt's suggestion.
Go ahead, read it.
Oh, sure, sorry, I just, um, the county show review titled two zero dot four zero agricultural district. To ensure that the regulations reflect current agricultural practices and market realities. This review should evaluate minimum lot sizes, accessory use definitions and conditional use procedures. To promote economically viable farm operations while maintaining environmental protections. Um, so when we're in the spirit of like evaluating things, I think as, as we've always had this conversation that we still need to do a lot of more talk with this kind of thing. Um, this to me is broad enough to say, let's, let's review this thing and talk about zoning. And I think what you can do, what you can't do, but it also gives kind of a little bit of direction in.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
My comment?
Okay, so I have a question, a second, uh. Director Personias, go ahead.
Yeah, so we're, um. We would, staff would be fully supportive of this policy, uh, amendment. We are proposing, uh, in the biennium, mid biennium budget, uh. The support of the executive, uh, some monies to update our, our zoning code. So this would be one of the things. Evaluate as a part of that process.
Sure can do the same anyways, almost.
Are you?
Yeah, 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 great.
Are you okay?
Oh, I mean, none of them just.
That's what I need to know because if you're telling me what you're sick.
Kelvin, if I was sick, I would have been beat, right?
Well, I, I've felt that way, but when.
No, I just, I started breathing for her, it doesn't work.
What are we doing? What are we doing?
Commissioner Masary.
Where's this going, Dan? Because we already have a six, eight, B six. So is this replacing that?
Um, I think. Let's see, so the one we were just at was eight A sixteen. So this could be an eight A seventeen.
Lucas, where would you put that?
Your thing makes sense, I think, under the economic viability.
Yeah, I think it puts better under.
I just wanted to.
Eight B.
I just wanted to make sure because then you had an eight seven, it looked like you had an eight B seven coming up too, so. Just want to make sure. I wanted to know if you were replacing or if this is going under.
Um, uh, no, this would be, uh, my attention would just be a new one we can replace with, if it seemed like a duplicate or something else, um. Sorry, let me get on the printer. So what, what are we, eight, D, what?
Eight B seven.
Eight B seven.
So Lucas just changed it, so it would be eight B seven. Under. Viability.
So it'd be, yeah, under agricultural economic viability. Be the last policy right there.
It makes sense to me, but my concern is, uh, along the lines of Commissioner. Uh, I've heard good saying that, uh, maybe we have to look at evolve, not just current trends, but evolving. Future trends. Because we have, we're both be planning for the future, not just. The, the trend practices in reality are going to be changing over time.
Commissioner Van Dale.
Adding to that, isn't that kind of the normal thing of planning commission? We just, it's just a continual progressive. Change of, we're constantly trying to do better and make better. Improvements.
We should, correct.
I mean, I agree with that. I, I'm, I'm just going to make a general comment around, you know. Part of why I have not felt super best at some of the conversations so far tonight, which is around. When I, when I want to like lean in on stuff with a comprehensive plan or anything else, it's whether, whether it's either. Actually changing the rules on the road that are going to have real effects on the public. Or it's, you know, a direction that we know is going to get followed. And I think a lot of the times, but we're just putting in, go review this, review that, realistically, you know, they're not going to do. Staff to review these things unless there's an actual issue that occurs where county council says we need this to happen. So we can put fifteen thousand, please review, look at this, explore that in these documents. I real, I, I could be wrong, but I don't think any of that occurs unless there's, you know, action or funding to follow that up, right? The, uh, all the adage of where you put your budget is what actually gets done. Like, we don't have budget to have any of this stuff happen. So. I'm not opposed to it. I'm not opposed to any of these items, but I also don't feel like spending six hours of our time debating. Go review some stuff that frankly, I don't think is going to happen. So just give people a button out of the room. Mark, Mark said he's going to do this next year.
Great.
Isn't he retired?
So I don't know that I, you know, cool, but he's not here.
I'm sorry, but his replacement's going to have this whole lift.
Yeah. Right, and, and that's, and yeah, so like if he says he's going to do it, great, I'm all for it. Like, I'm, again, as I said, not opposed. I'm just. Making a general comment for proof of thought.
I would say when you were out of the room that, um, uh, the executive is proposing a budget item, uh, that we're going, is going to council. Uh, next month, uh, that would, um, give us some money to, uh, update our zoning code in general and. We would certainly address this as well.
Cool.
Yeah, I'm all for it.
Isn't being attached to, which later will go up soon. That's cool.
Commissioner Hanson.
Well, I can't support it unless it says something like current and evolving. Cause again, we, let not plan for the past.
Well, current is now, it's hard to predict the future, but you have like, would you, so you, you would say put in current and evolving agricultural practices. Count votes here.
That's easy.
That easy?
Put that in.
Easy, sure, current and evolving.
I just want to echo the sentiment of, uh, the word evolution involving. And we do have forecasting and models, um, and we do have data still, even though it's been. Hard to find, there it is, there are a lot of models that show, um, what the climate impacts will look like, who they will affect. And how, uh, we need to prepare for climate refugees. And I think that's something important to that. While we're thinking about resources lands, to think about the, uh, migration patterns that. U S, um, and non-US citizens that will have to flee countries or spaces that will no longer be in. US um and non-US citizens that will have to flee countries or spaces that will no longer be inhabitable because of uh climate impacts.
We'll go there, dude. Hey, are there any other questions or comments?
Tear out all the berries and fill thousands.
Eileen, would you call the roll for you?
Yes, Ben Dylan.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Eisenberg. Yes. Greg.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Wasari.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Passes.
Commissioner Hampton. I have a motion that I think might get left behind in the sequence if I don't make it soon.
We have it on the list.
Oh, you do?
The ones that you said.
I have another one.
Oh.
Go for it.
Go for it.
Yeah, this is in response to the letter from Futurewise and one of the preeminent uh land use uh legal scholars, Tim Trahamovich. He's suggesting that there be a couple of changes at eight A three. And uh you've got all got that letter, but under A wants to insert after farmland soils or farmland of statewide import each soils. And then under D I have agricultural operations and may include smaller parcels contiguous with other agricultural resource lands. And and he has a whole uh rationale of why this complies better with state law and wax, if we change that wording, which I uh I don't know if everybody had a chance to read it, read all that rationale, but that's so I'm proposing. I don't know if that's two amendments or one amendment, you can check and make a drawing on that.
Can we just put the language up on the screen?
There we are.
Yeah, give give one moment to catch up here.
Right?
Oh, boy, nope.
You want to move it, you? Um, this is uh eight A. It's part of eight eight A, let me see, eight A fifteen. So it's it's modifying the the lettered uh provisions under eight A fifteen.
Eight A one five?
Yeah. No, I think it's eight A three, isn't it?
Is this correct?
What, oh.
Futurewise did make some, oh my, oh, sorry. Uh pardon me, commissioners, uh Futurewise did make a incorrect uh statement, they said eight A two, they meant eight A three, that is
Okay.
where their citation should be.
Okay.
And so then I think this is the language added as Futurewise suggested.
Yeah. Right. Thanks for for catching that, you're right up there with the big boys. Wait, so we have a motion, do we have a something? Did we get it, where are we at? Uh, right up there in the middle of the screen.
Can you highlight it? Please, thank you.
Turn to it, well, the whole thing, yeah. They're purple, you can see that, changes are purple. I have a.
I'm just a bit confused, what's PDS responsibility based behavior? What's that doing in the motion?
I don't know, call it for your thought.
Maybe ask for thought. It shouldn't be in the motion.
Um, Jim, you had said that you had made two motions.
Well, then, then both of those, I, if you want to go one at a time, both of those areas that are underlined.
Okay, you're 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 proposing these two things.
Yeah, okay, got it. And they have to do with stricter compliance with the statutes. And by a little slightly broader interpretation than we had here previously.
And you're you're looking for a second at this point?
Yeah.
Right, great. Point of order there, we should be doing one motion at a time.
One at a time, I guess, that's what I asked you.
Well, 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 let's put them.
I'll second whichever one we're doing.
It's going to be uh the upper one first. Sure.
If I got actually change anything though, so. Yeah, all right.
Commissioner Misery.
This is in second and right, so we're on to this.
Yes, yes.
Can somebody tell me what the difference is between prime farmland soils and farmland of statewide important soils?
Go ahead.
While you're at your. Uh, in the WAC, um, uh, I'll just read this, where it says, um, it's one of the things to, whether it's ag land or whatever, and says, let's see, does the land has long-term commercial significance for agriculture? Determining this factor, counties and cities should consider the following non-exclusive criteria as applicable, it has like this is a list of like ten things, here's all the things you could, it's, the important thing is they say consider the following non-exclusive criteria as applicable, so it's very like loosey-goosey, but one of them is uh item one is the classification of prime and unique farmland soils and farmlands of statewide importance as mapped by the Natural Resources Conservation Service, and this is one of the reasons I wanted to change that language because I think in in our current thing, it says, what's the the current ones, there's something like slightly different. Basically, it says the majority of the area contains prime farmland soils determined by the Natural Resource Conservation Service, and it's like, it's kind of similar language, but it's just like we should do what the law says and what the what our comp plan says is different from what the law says, you know, just slightly, does that make sense?
Yep.
And the 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 law re- refers to NRCS, but there's a two different standards that the NRCS has, right, two different classifications, yeah.
So the NRCS has prime farmland and they have farmland of statewide importance.
Prime farmland to USAI designation.
That this also, so the classification of prime unique farmland soils comma and farmland statewide importance comma as mapped by the Natural Resources Conservation Service, so there's a Natural Resources Conservation Service, they map a couple of things. One of is farmland statewide importance and one of is primary unique farmland soils, it's going to be that, right?
Did the person from the ag committee speak to what effect this would have, if they know?
Eliza, can you answer Commissioner Misery's question?
Yeah, do you mind just giving me a quick recap on what the question was, just real quick, just to.
There's there's a motion on the table to insert under policy eight A three, three A. Um, it currently reads the majority of the areas contain prime farmland soils as determined by the Natural Resource Conservation Services, their service, and it the motion would uh add that underlying portion, which is or farmland of statewide important soils.
And I know you're just this, sorry, I know you were just discussing it, but is there a reason why we couldn't just put and farmland statewide important soils? Instead of or?
I don't know the difference between the two, so I was just wondering what impact this has.
I see, I might defer to either Dakota or Lauren on this because they worked really hard on the agriculture land assessment. And they're really.
Eliza, I'll I'll share what I think, and I could be wrong, but um if you put both like and, then you have to have both of them, if you put or, then either one of them will trigger.
I see.
And the WAC says and. Classification of prime unique farmland soils comma and farmlands of statewide importance comma is mapped by.
Oh. Well, there you go, you've got it right in the WAC.
Well, I would say if we just leave it as or, and it's going to trigger more farmland, that would be better.
Or.
To leave it at.
So.
As a motion.
And Lauren, Temple, go ahead.
Yeah. Uh, so it's my understanding when we look at the prime soils layers statewide, farmland of statewide importance, it's just one of those criteria. So I don't know if it would make a huge difference just because you'll get your, it's laid out as prime, if irrigated, primed, drained, all prime statewide importance. It's just one of those criteria in that layer.
Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, I think looking at the law, I'd agree with that, it says, you know, the land has long-term commercial significance for agriculture, um it to determine that, how we should consider the following non-exclusive criteria as applicable, so one of them is the farmland soils, but the next one is the availability of public facilities, the next one is tax status, the next one is availability of public services, that kind of relationship, there's like a bunch of provisions. So I I I guess I would say um ma- maybe we don't need to hang up on the and or, one, because it's in the law, before the law, but two, because there's a long list that the counties should consider, and the list is non-exclusive as applicable.
All right. Look at the second on there. But, thank you. Okay, is there any other discussion out there? And we'll vote on them one at a time. Since we split the two of them. If there's no other discussion, uh, we start on.
I mean, I would I would say just like if we're we're looking at this, I just, you know, where where we put an and, just make it so it just maps the the language um in the law, um.
Commissioner Misery.
I, like I said, I've been, I don't, like I said, I've been asking a lot of questions, I don't know these definitions, but if the idea is broad in this to allow more properties to get more ag properties, it seems like the or would be a smarter way to do that than the and.
My sure, great.
I concur, I think the way that the and is written in the WAC is to say, to look at this thing and this thing, which in this context, I think should be an or, because it's basically saying it's could be either or there, it's saying you should look at both of them, and if either is applicable, it could be included, so I think or is still the the good way to go here.
So I'm hearing or, and that was how the motion went. Uh, is there any other discussion? Are are leaning, would you call the roll for it?
Yes. Ben Dylan.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Eisenberg left, uh, Greif.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Wasari.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Passes.
Oh. Now, the next one. Speaking to the second part, because um second part talks about uh small lot agricultural zone complying with Growth Management Act's requirement to conserve agriculture long anyway, so agriculture lands of long-term significance. And uh, I think the idea is that there are small agricultural areas that uh entities adjacent to larger ones, and this gives us an opportunity to to roll them in. It's like page three. Yeah. This is. So it says if, basically if the dominant par parcel size is large enough it may in to have agricultural operations, you can roll in smaller parcels contiguous with it to uh roll them into that classification.
Where is this in the letter?
The W WAC thirty six, whatever, wherever.
Where in the letter, where is this?
Page six. Commissioner, go ahead, you're big man.
Yeah, I think it's like the last one, the WAC says something similar, but not quite, um, so the WAC says these are the things that you should evaluate, um, sixth one, says predominant parcel size, which may include smaller parcels that contiguous with other agricultural resource lands, that's the WAC language, and our language is
Pretty similar.
The prominent parcel size in the area is large enough to adequately maintain agriculture operations, and then Futurewise looks to add it may include smaller parcels, which I think is what the WAC basically says, which may include smaller parcels that contiguous with other agricultural. Yeah, so they're just kind of quoting from the WAC, it looks like.
Does Nick second pass for this, or do I need to second this, or?
I'm happy to check in this, but if you'd like to.
No, go ahead, that's fine. So we're discussing it anyway, so I thought we'd get it in order.
Fame to fame. I have a question, I'll go ahead, Mr. John.
Go, go, go.
Uh, so Mr. Presoni, if I have a question for you.
Yes.
So if I have a large parcel on the northwest side of Sumas, and there's a small ag parcel on the southeast side of Sumas, and it's mostly surrounded by water, but it's not contiguous with anything, that wouldn't be considered ag land?
This is just one criteria of eleven that we would.
Okay.
Dozens.
Yeah, I wanted to add that question.
Dozens and dozens.
Doesn't mandate, it just says, look, you can consider additional factors.
All right, any additional discussion? Eileen, are you ready to call the roll?
Yes.
Right.
Brown.
Number two.
Dan.
Yes.
Greif.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Wasari.
Yes.
Ben Dylan.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Barton.
Yeah.
Passes.
Are there eight eight A amendments? Others? Because I have another, go ahead, because the other Futurewise amendment eight A fifteen. And uh it, when it talks about de-designating uh, it says because they no longer meet the criteria for agricultural resource lands of long-term commercial significance. So it adds that a reason justification for de-designating land as agricultural land for other use. And that's on page uh eight, but Futurewise is, and I guess, and that's a a additional wording for eight A fifteen. Well, there we go.
There it is.
Boom. Nice.
Mark, what does that mean when it says that county shall require mitigation briefly?
So um, the three cities, Everson, Nooksack, and Sumas, and their UGA proposals are proposing to move in their UGAs into ag lands. And some of them are swapping, or de-designating some that are now in the floodplain that were for uh or de-designating some that are, yeah, not in the floodplain, uh and designating new ones that are out of the new flood maps. And so they've, we have this hundred thousand acre goal, right? And the voice had sort of this incremental loss of ag, so this policy is aimed at stating that we need to mitigate for those loss of ag lands when converted to UGAs. And the cities have proposed that they would propose mitigation for that loss. We're we're still, we're meeting with them. We're, we're still, we're meeting with them actually next week to s- get into the specifics. About what that means and how would that happen?
So there's been discussion already on that, and they're, they're leaning that way, realizing that, okay.
Yes, they proposed.
Okay.
So we're just acknowledging that, okay, we're going to require it. Here's the formal policy. It, this, this policy may change. The, the language of it, or just.
Sure.
You know, the, the particulars of it may change, but we're, we're meeting, starting to meet with them, but okay, how would that happen? And then when it happened? What's the trigger, you know, those kinds of things, but that's basically what it said.
Okay.
And so this proposed language changes. Is absolutely true, right? You're. It's a, it's a, a decision that the county would make that this land. Uh, is now more valuable, more important for accommodating urban development than it is for accommodating ag. And so then it's officially has to be de-designated and said it's no longer.
But the amendment basically says if you have high quality agricultural land. Of commercial significance, you shouldn't choose to convert it and mitigate.
Two second. Commissioner Masari.
Oh, I thought we had a second. If we don't, I'm waiting.
Okay.
Ask me if we have a second. I'll second it. We have a second, um. Yeah, this, when I read this. This policy would then make some of the. The cities' current UGA proposals out of compliance with our own policy. So that's. Should be considered. It. It's, it's not just a subtle change.
Right.
The, the original policy allowed it. In a broader top context, this would not allow some of the stuff to be proposed.
Well. So what we're doing is this agricultural land assessment, which is required by. The GMA. You have to do a countywide assessment, not just the specific parcels that are proposed for de-design. So staff working on that, we hope to have that in it. I mean. We needed to get. The city's UGA addendums, right? Those was one of the questions we asked them to come back with. Okay. You have to meet this criteria, right? Uh, so if you're going to de-designate, you may have to say that it's no longer meets the, the criteria. So. Well, it does, okay. So that's, that's all this, this is, that, that. That's all this is saying to me is that. If, if they make that decision and the county agrees and makes that decision, and we're going to convert those ag lands to urban growth areas. Then automatically you're saying they don't meet the criteria anymore. Does that make sense?
My sure.
You have to, right? Um, this is, this addition feels, you know, like it's like the redundant. Yeah. First, we're probably also on the code and generally. I aim to avoid adding redundant language, but it's not required. So I think I'm a, a no on this for that reason.
My sure, Tom.
Yeah, I agree. It feels redundant of this. With your brown.
I, I agree that it's redundant, but, but I also have a concern that. Requiring mitigation. Is simply adding to the cost of building housing in the first place. So. If you, if you say, well, it's. Call, pick a number, fifty thousand dollars an acre. That's fifty thousand dollars an acre of the house, and it's to be more expensive. That being said, the one, the one. Exception I would consider is. Reasonable mitigation, if you can make the, make, make sure you get the right formula. Is to say, if you're going to use that to buy at market value. Development rights off ag land that's owned. Say R five. Then I think that perhaps is a reasonable trade-off.
So we're, um, staff's working on the ALA, as I said, we, we hope to get that to you next month. The potential, it'll, it'll look at potential mitigation, which is kind of a video of options. And the one we're focusing on. Um. And we'll discuss with the cities to kind of get some clarity and hopefully some consensus is. Is, uh, basically an end loop fee. Right? And the fee would be based on, um, our conservation easements that we've. Been doing on ag land. So we get a dollar per acre figure. And then we would apply that figure to, okay, if you're going to. See X is proposing to de-designate eleven acres of ag land, then the fee is eleven times. Nine thousand per acre, whatever the assessed, um. Uh, our, our, our current sort of assessed value, which is an average acre. Of ag land, and that's the fee. So it, it has a, uh, it would have a fundamental sort of statistical evidence-based assessment. For. Determining what that fee would be. And that fee would then be paid and dedicated into the conservation futures. Dedicated to the conservation even program. By. Development rights off ag land elsewhere in the county. That's the, that's the nexus to it, right? So if you're losing ag land, but. We're going to voluntarily, right? The conservation easement program is a voluntary program, so making anybody else do it, but we have a lot of people waiting in line. Why? And not enough money to buy those, right? So this would be one way to have fun those.
Austin, that's it.
Please go, Michael.
Uh, this, this. This amendment may not find fa- uh, favor with the group, but I support it because I don't want to see. Uh, agricultural land of long-term commercial significance converted. As a general principle. And I think there are costs to society of doing those conversions that are, uh. Considerable. And, and, uh. I don't really believe that things can be mitigated regardless what, whether it's wetlands or, or, uh. Or stormwater, where I don't re- really believe things are adequately mitigated under these mitigation programs. So, uh, and if. Uh, limiting the amount of land that can be converted. Into residential, into UGAs on these rural communities. If that happens, it'll be another incentive for them to densify within their existing boundaries, which is what I'd like to see them do rather than converting farmland. Uh. Which. Doing so, converting farmland is con- contrary to the, this, uh, rule and, and spirit of the. Growth regulations, so. But I don't mean that it's going to pass, but that's my rationale on the whole thing.
Any other? Commissioner Masari.
Yeah, so. Mark, you're saying that regardless of this language is in here, so this is the code, and they, they will have to prove that their, the stuff to be in. Proposed to be in the UGA is no longer. Just because it's currently, you know, classified as being at farmland. For agriculture, significant agriculture land, that it will have to prove that it's not for them to be able to do their UGA proposals.
Essentially. Yeah. And that, you know. Hmm, these are non-exclusive criteria, right? So it's not necessarily a black and white, uh. Thing, but it's, 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 there is discretion in it, but. Yeah, no. And, you know. There have been court cases, a lot of this, this has gone up to the Supreme Court, uh, before and several jurisdictions, so it's gotten a lot of litigation and. You know, that's why we want to be really careful about it. Thoughtful about how we're going about it. Or how the cities are going about it, uh, because the, the county ultimately approves those boundaries, not the cities, so. And then we get sued. At the cities. So we have to defend their decisions in a sense of their arguments. So I make sure that we're comfortable, we're, that it's a defensible decision.
Commissioner Brown.
So you just confused me, so. They. They don't have to. If, if the land is ag land. They don't have to prove that it's not ag land, that the UGA. They've just got to prove that they're mitigating the impact, the conversion, is that right?
They've got to prove that in, they no longer meet the criteria.
Is it being ag land?
Huh?
Of it being ag land of significance.
Change circumstances is the argument you use, or things have changed, right? That land is maybe it's now it's fallow, it's no longer being farmed. Like it was when it was originally designated. Uh, you could argue, you know. Property owners not interested in farming anymore. The property owner wants to develop, you know, there's. It's adjacent to a UGA, that's not automatic. Courts have said that, but that's where it gets.
Yeah, well, we're, we're. Very cool. You know, you don't want to build one, this is not right next to the, this is boundaries, we want to build this pocket further away.
Yeah, yeah, that's the harder.
That is a tough one.
That's the harder one.
Yeah, but.
Go ahead, Doc.
It feel. That feels like a little bit of a joke if the argument. One of the arguments could be why it's not. You know, commercial. Not a commercial significant ag land because the current owner wants to develop it, well.
Yeah, i- in and of itself, that's not.
Yeah.
Courts have ruled on that, said, no, 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 that's not in and of itself. You got to look at all the criteria, right? That's why we do the countywide assessment and, and you look through and say, well, yeah, the, probably the soils have changed, but. Uh, stormwater conditions change, especially for parcels that are right next to urban growth areas, right? They get flooded, they, you know. It, it becomes less valuable from an agricultural use standpoint, um. So. There's, there's a variety of things that could happen, but the courts have ruled, just because it's next to a UGA doesn't mean that. Automatically means it's no longer. Um. An ag land of long-term commercial significance, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Do we have a motion and a second? I get lost here when we. Wrong. So Eileen, will you call the role please?
Yes, Dunn.
No.
Gray.
No.
Hanson.
Yes.
Masari.
No.
Ben Dillon.
Yes.
Brown. Barton.
No.
Motion fails.
Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, this is where we're going through the future wise stuff, I just want to draw attention to the fact that. The language they often use is, is mandatory under GMA. GMA by nature says there's something, every correct, there's fifteen competing priorities. And they are, in many cases, like, oh, we've got to protect farmland, but we've got to have housing, right? So. I just want to caution us that. I don't want to fall into the trap, it's just because they say it's, it's, it's under the GMA, therefore it's mandatory, therefore you can't do it. No, you've got to balance it with a little bit of things for GMA. Especially not.
Same thing, and luckily they don't have any more specific edits. To propose. And they have other comments you might want to read, though.
Got thirty minutes, people.
We'll go through the rest of these.
You're next.
Sure. Um, are there? Lucas, any more at the top that we missed? There's just top of the sheet.
There. This sheet.
See, those are later in this document. Under forestry. We should do agriculture.
Okay, sounds good. So could we look at all the comments about agriculture?
I, I don't have them organized that way because I didn't get them in time to organize them. They are just imprinted as I got them.
Okay, no worries. Well, then let's, let's maybe just talk about this, this first one here. Um, item fourteen goal eight B new. Ensure agriculture is the highest and best use of agricultural land. This kind of goes back to, you know, what are we, what are we doing here? Are we saying that you have, you know? You're allowed to own land that has designation ag, or like you're actually allowed to use that as, as farming? Um, so I just kind of want to get a sense of like how we, how we feel about this paragraph. I don't know if this is really a goal. Or maybe it's in the intro somewhere. I'm not, I'm not quite sure where the best place is, but. It's sort of formed out this framework of, um, you know. That both. Plenty of land that's sown ag is important, but also that being able to use it as natural farm. Um, so just read it out, um. Uh, title is ensure agriculture remains the highest and best use of agricultural land. Preserving farmland alone is not sufficient to sustain Washington County's agricultural economy. County policy shall ensure that agricultural lands remain not only physically preserved, but also economically productive. Infrastructure-ready and supplied with the water necessary for continued production. Agriculture must be treated as the highest and best use of the designated agricultural lands. Uh, that is my motion.
Is your motion to add it as a new goal or policy?
Or is it to replace, other than the point of interest, I was gonna ask, is it, is it meant to replace the current eight B?
Um.
Goal.
If not an eight B.
I don't think so. I don't think it's to replace. I would probably.
Only be on.
Whereas.
On.
There's a goal eight B fifteen. The, oh, I'm on.
Yeah, yes.
Page fifteen, you said.
Is, yeah, his, his item said goalie B.
Oh, I thought it was policy A B.
Yeah. Uh. And it seems, it seems similar than, uh, and I, I do prefer it. But I wasn't sure if the intent was to replace or not.
At the moment, we do not have a second.
I'll, I'll second it. Okay, so since I'm discussing it, I might as well.
Um. Yeah, that might be a place. So I'm starting on page eight fourteen. Um, this is agricultural economic viability. Uh, currently says agriculture is essential contributor. Um, it's protected, there are. Agricultural resources. Um. Yeah, that might be the. Best placed either. Add to that or replace that.
How do we think?
I'm open.
Okay, I just want to know, I just, I'm just.
Can I, you want to, you want to, guys want to deliberate or discuss? The language, and then if it's approved, we can find a place for it?
Uh, yeah, I think mostly, I just want to get a sense of the committee, like, is that language, is that too strong? Like, is it, do we want to keep this idea of? You just designate land ag, but it can't farm it like, yeah, whatever. Or we want to push a little bit more and say, look, when he does the ag land, it's really important that people can use it. And there's a bunch of things that need to happen with it, you know, you need the structure or.
Commissioner Van Dale.
Well, it just starts out saying ag is an essential contributor. We're back to that, are we being redundant by just adding more to it? Or are we achieving something by adding? That's my question, are we? Because it, over and over and over, it's talking about, you know, don't have negative impacts on, on aquatic lands, you know. Support strongly, support agricultural with sales and jobs. I mean. Throughout this beginning, two paragraphs, it covers a lot. Just a thought.
Well. Commissioner Masari.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we need more just kind of general supportive of ag statements. I feel like that's the bulk of the chapter. Um. And so I, I feel like it's just another, it's reinforcing it, it sounds good, but I don't know that, like, I don't want to change anything long, really in reality.
I would, I would second that.
Would, would you support something if you're like, oh, this tax, you might change something?
I mean, depends when it changes, I guess.
I don't see it changing anything.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner, I have to. The only thing I see change is agriculture is an ex- an essential contributor. Under economic viability. And this one says. That it's the highest and best use. Which is a stronger statement than an essential contributor.
Right?
I think that's the key of the phrase that isn't just redundancy.
Any other comment?
Oh, you said, I, I hear a whole lot of support for it, so it's okay with you, I'll, I'll pull back, cause no. Um. Okay, so let, let's look at one of these, just the next one down there, um, this is, this is a little bit in this vein of like. Pushing for the use of ag land as ag land, um. So see what you guys think about this one. So, uh, this would be to prioritize the ability to farm over passive land preservation. Um, so language, you know, a little more aggressive, but just want to get a sense of what you're saying. Um, land use regulations, conservation easements and preservation tools. Shall be implemented in a manner that supports active agriculture production and farm business viability. The county shall evaluate existing agricultural zoning. Easy terms and critical area provisions to ensure they do not unnecessarily restrict agricultural infrastructure or operational flexibility.
We have a second? Being done, oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay, that's right. Uh, the rest of them are, are conference similar veins, so I'll, I'll just pass on those.
Okay.
Well.
I just have to say that I'm in total agreement with what you say here, but there's a redundancy factor is a limitation. That's all.
What you say, a limitation, you mean?
To, from what you wanted to second or su- support is if, if those things are being established and other, uh. Under verbiage in these, this section, it seems just unnecessary to put more in, that's all. Not that I disagree with anything you say there.
Okay.
I, I think maybe I've. Agree with.
Feel the same, but.
With what you said and what Jim said.
Okay, so if we. Were to take out some stuff and put this in. Would that be more powerful?
I just think it's redundant.
I mean. But it's redundant to which sections? But it's redundant to which sections?
Overall, in the ag section, just, yeah.
You know. How about the next one?
I don't have anything else, Brad. Are we good?
Is that next one new or different?
Yeah, the other ones are all, they're all kind of a similar thing, um and I don't, uh I don't think I'll bring emotions. Um, I did have a question about the um. Long-term significance, um Mark, do you know when that study will be done, it kinda has to get done before we do some of the U G A?
Yeah, well, we're, like I said, we're meeting with the cities next week. Try to um fine tune that litigation language, uh and I do need to know for sure, okay? How many exactly each city is gonna have or not, would it would it result in, if approved, would it result in that loss of ag land and then desecrate those parcels? Staff, look at the latest proposals right now and analyze who knows against the criteria, so what I just talked about. Um, but like I said, we're, I hope by mid-November. We would have that, so you guys will certainly have it before your final public hearing.
Yeah.
And the time to be finalized, I kinda need you guys to finalize the. Uh your recommendations on the U G A proposal, so that we know exactly how many acres of are proposed for her de-designation.
Does anybody else have anything?
Agriculture.
Uh, I've got one thing on page um eight dash eight, Lucas, there's two graphs. I'm assuming we're moving, removing the lower graph.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Cause that's the updated one up top there, I think you can see it, uh that's the updated and that's the removal, so that's the purple line through it.
Okay, there's a appendix, so.
Uh and then on page eight dash nine, and then in a couple of other places, uh it's just a probably describers, um. On eight nine, towards the top, under the heading agricultural land base, there is a series of like additions and attractions, it says. Two thousand twelve, that's crossed out, then two thousand twenty-two, which is underlined, and then two thousand twelve, which crossed out, two thousand twenty-two, which is underlined, and then something else. Um, can you just kind of, you scrub the document for me? Or tell us which of those numbers you're keeping? You see that?
Yep, yep, I'm bringing it up for everybody here, um it should be all the two thousand twenty-two. Is the update, I'm not sure what that is, that just could be a Scrivener's error. Here, but it should, uh the intention is that it'll all be twenty twenty-two, cause that's where the data uh went up to.
Okay, so all of all that stuff, the only words are, so the sentence will read, uh land the base from nineteen forty-nine to twenty twenty-two, the continuing loss?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess I do have one real quick, page one on page eight dash one. The first sentence there where it's outlining, talks real broadly about all the topics, growth and harvest of farm products, regeneration, harvesting timber. Use of marine resource lands for shellfish harvest, seems like the other ones are all real broad. General discussion of it, and then it limits the marine resource to just shellfish harvest, seems like that should also be kind of a. General term in this area.
Part of where we know? Okay, that's true.
I I don't know what's the exact right term, but the other one, you know, we go from just broad farming. Timber, mineral extraction, and then shellfish harvest for the marine marine resource ones.
I think you're totally right. I helped write the this marine resource section, and it's supposed to be broader than just shellfish.
And and fisheries. And that um. Base. Party industry resources, or I don't know.
Yeah.
You get, you get algae and uh and seaweed too.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I mean, catching fish is part of the deal too. Uh, so how about replacing shellfish harvest with, what'd you say, aquatic resources?
That makes sense, anything to do with.
Hey, can you blow it up just a little bigger so we can?
Yeah.
Can we just say use of marine resource lands? We specify what for?
So I I do have a question, and. Looking at that, I think about some of the places around the Pacific Northwest where. Uh some of the, we'll call it aquatic land, but the shellfish harvest where the tide goes in and out, but you have the.
Right.
But you have clams and things like that, so I'm looking then as you go a little further down. And I'm wondering if that's what it's supposed to be. To be about.
I think it needs to be the aquatic.
There's lots of climbing and things like that.
That's why the aquatic resources thing, you gotta cover the whole gamut, really.
Yeah, I wondered if that was put in that way, they talked about those lands rather than thinking about fishing.
Yeah, I think you're right. Um, so things in the streams have impact on fishing too, so.
Well, I mean, we, you get, once you get into marine resource, it mentions all the different stuff, I just don't think that the very first sentence. Sure. Just talk about self.
Yeah, right below that, it mentions fishing right there, it's even in blue in the, you know, cause that's been added into it.
I think aquatic resources is fine, is fine, I.
Yeah, pretty simple.
We in motion for that, or is that?
Is everybody okay with this?
Yeah.
Did we make that correction, Lucas, or that changed?
Yes.
Done already.
Good. Can I?
Go ahead.
Uh, Director Personias, do they need to make a motion for that, or can we just do that?
They just told you to do it.
That's all they.
What do you mean?
Yeah, it's the chair you gotta ask.
The director is purely advisory here.
He works to the executive branch, we can't give him.
No, 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 earn it, gotta, counsel can't give him direction.
Yeah, that's what, that's what the chart is, the process inside there. Thank you. We're sure, Doc.
I have a question on page eight dash twenty-one. Um, there are a uh a bunch of questions from the forest advisory committee, I think, um and they. It looks like, I just have kind of a question to process there, um so you can scroll over that and then bring it up and.
I was like, there's a bunch of comments.
Well, we see that you've got your hand up there also, and we will get your weight in on this, unless you can answer, Commissioner Dunn, for that.
No, actually, I feel that you're finished with the agricultural section, and so I was just gonna see if there's any other further questions, or if you're still going over the agricultural section.
Go off duty?
Yes.
Are we done with agriculture? We are, thank you.
Thank you so much for your input.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Good night.
I'm making motion to a gym.
What? No. Oh, yeah.
A German?
German? He's got, he's got, he's got a ton of forestry.
You can't imagine.
We are obviously not there to get.
Only with egg.
There's, there's an argument to be made. Not gonna get down tonight.
There's an argument to be made during a journey, considering we're twelve minutes from nine, and we're arguably not gonna get even into a motion.
So we can make that argument, and maybe we should, but we are clearly not done.
For another ten minutes, we can just go.
Hey, I can, I can definitely filibuster, I'll do.
Are there, are there more amendments, the gen- the introduction, general verbiage?
I had a question for Lucas about the um forest resource lands, but if we wanted, if we wanted to stay with another section first.
Which is next? That's next, right?
Commissioner McCarrick?
Seems like we're done with ag, I have stuff for forestry, and I think other people have stuff in the chapters, but. I don't think it's worth getting into it with a couple of minutes left if we're gonna be leaving at nine, because I think we'll spend that long even deciding if somebody wants to make a motion.
That'll kill that, right?
So.
We've got, we've got eleven minutes.
We'll see.
Just so much done.
I I would make a motion to be fair.
Well, I mean, Commissioner Brown already made that.
Then I'll second it.
There you go. A miracle.
So we just wanna continue this uh another time group?
Yep.
Yeah, we will, we will, we'll, we'll find some time.
Yeah.
It'll be every Tuesday, every Thursday, I mean, I would see it coming.
Suggest putting on the agenda for when we have those U G As, we already covered as a.
Yeah, if we can get to it, okay, okay, we can do that, uh just a quick question before you go, does anybody have specific? Uh questions or proposals regarding mineral resource lands? You do, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay, cause Andy Weiser is here and our county geologist, and I hate him to have to stop through long meetings.
See, to be fair, you should have told us that. It's okay, cause he gets.
I used to work in resource protection, and it's um my understanding from what my team, few morophologists. Indicated through the studies he's done is that the Nook's that. Nook's that river is considered uh. Mineral mineral star for coarse coarse sediment, meaning gravel. Is that, does that, is that confirm what your understanding of the studies?
Andy? Is that a question for Andy?
As an agriculture?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, Michael Moblin indicated studies, studies were um. Are conclusive that uh the system as a whole is, it's mineral, is deficient in coarse sediment. For ecological. Uh purposes.
For like, for, for salmon.
For salmon habitat and others associated. No problem with fine sediment, there's lots of that, but it's not, there's this um. Still, never get going around that the, that the river is basically clogged with all this gravel. But I don't, but I, but scientific indications are is that isn't the case in a gen- in in general, although that some of the tributaries. Have places in which they have adequate or maybe excessive coarse sediment, but the river as a whole is sediment starved for coarse sediment.
Coarse sediment, yeah, yeah, I know that the narrative from the flood. Work is being done is that there is this slug of sediment that is raising the foul wag and allowing uh flooding at. At lower stages that has historically been observed, but there's not much understanding of why, why that is. How fast does that slug move through the system, where 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 the, where the system's headed? I don't know about, you know, gradation size and what.
Yeah, right.
What would be expected of a, of the Nook's that river if it were behaved normally?
Right, and we know that channelization changes the whole dynamic and creates problems in that regard.
Okay, all right. Would you have a motion? All right, the term, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sure.
I thought that was your main to the motion, the jerk.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I think it is.
Man, there's gonna be a lot of.
Yeah, I just. There's a lot of the. There's still a lot, the size, the shape.
I think almost just two, you know, just words, cause I heard you how the post is like.
Yeah, it's like hard to. It's fun.
Yeah.
And the reason I did.
Yeah, I have a lot of. But I am reading. Especially like.
But you know, it's. No, I, I.